Never started one of these things late. City Council is now in session, please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly spirit, we ask for your guidance as we deliberate this evening's agenda. Allow us to hear the issues and use our best judgment in our decisions. Bless everyone present tonight in watching and listening to the proceedings. Let us be thankful for the ability to discuss the issues and debate as necessary our points of view. Let us all work towards the betterment of our community. We ask for all of this in your holy name and let us all say amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Here.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes, here. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of February the 16th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council, the City of Suffolk, and the closed meeting.
Motion is in order, with the pleasure of Council. Councilman Williams move to approve. Councilman Goldberg.
Second.
A motion for approval and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next item is approval of the minutes from the September 1st, 2022 work session and regular meeting, and a motion would be in order, with the pleasure of Council. Councilman Johnson.
Move for approval.
Councilman Fawcett.
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yeah.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have one special presentation this evening, the United Way Campaign Partnership Overview and Award Presentation. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. With us this evening is Mr. Jacob Peterson, Ms. Melissa Matthews, and Michelle Anderson, representing United Way of Southampton Roads. At this time, I'd like to call them to the podium.
Good evening.
Oh. I was following the instructions as were told to me. Good evening. I am Melissa Will Mathews, and I would like to present on behalf of the United Way of Southampton Roads with our esteemed gratitude. A huge thank you to the City of Suffolk who has raised over $58,000 this year as part of their workplace giving chantane. So, thank you so much. And I don't know, are you shaking hands?
Oh, I'm shaking. Yes, I'm kissing, I'm kissing, anyway, whatever. I don't want to make any pictures.
Thank you so much, and I have a few remarks, if you don't mind.
Can I get a photo?
Oh, yeah, see, oh, he missed it.
Sorry, yeah. You got it all the way here.
He missed a photo, pointing.
One more. Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to give a little bit of information. This money is part of some of the amazing work that's able to be done in the 757, especially here in Suffolk. Some of the money that was raised as part of last year's campaign was able to fund an amazing summer program here in the City of Suffolk as part of the public schools. So, I just wanted to give some information to you all. So, that was 587 students, kindergarten through fifth grade. So, an average of 88% of students attended that program each day over the summer, and the students participated in academic learning activities in the morning and then enrichment activities in the afternoon. The activity, excuse me, the academic sessions included hands-on learning and small group instructions with an overall student-to-teacher ratio of 11 to 1. As a result of the academic focus of the program, overall student scores improved in both reading and mathematics from the spring to fall following the summer program. Additionally, participating student performance in reading and mathematics showed improvement, while students who did not participate experienced summer learning loss of 40 to 25 points in both subject areas respectively. Additionally, participating students showed more improvement compared to non-participating students. As a result, students who did not participate experienced less growth over the summer, whereas participating students showed improvement in their reading ability overall. So, I just wanted to give a little example of how you all's donations are doing great work here in your community and overall. So, thank you to all of you who have participated. We really appreciate all you do.
Very well.
So, thank you so much.
I would like to say one thing I want to thank, the United Way, for everything they do, and more importantly, I want to thank our employees for their generosity, $58,302.27. We could have used that tonight, couldn't we? No, I mean, this is going to a really good cause. Thank you for everything you do, and I'm going to give this to the manager.
Thank you.
Excuse me. At this time, we'll consider the removal of the consent agenda item and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of the consent agenda item would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If any members of City Council wish to remove the consent agenda item, to vote on it separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Otherwise, a motion would be in order to adopt the agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett.
I move to adopt as presented.
Councilman Johnson. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yeah.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Madam Clerk, please present the items for consideration.
An ordinance, item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate airport rescue grant funds from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, for the Suffolk Executive Airport.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, regarding item seven, the city has received $32,000 in airport rescue grant funds from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, in support of the Suffolk Executive Airport. The funds will be used for fuel purchases at the airport in accordance with the grant guidelines. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund for FY '22 by $32,000, and there is no local match required.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
We'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is to consider an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 26 of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, Elections, which establishes the boundaries of boroughs. Mr.? I'm sorry.
I didn't have a motion. I just called the roll, but there was a motion.
No motion? Okay, my bad.
I didn't hear it.
I was going to, but.
We're going to do it again.
Okay. So, we're going to call the roll on the consent agenda item?
Yeah, we're going to have a motion, and then I'm going to call it.
Okay. I thought we had one.
Make the motion, Mayor.
Councilman Goldberg.
Make the motion, Mayor.
Make a motion for, I assume that's for approval.
Yes, for approval.
Thank you. And a second from Council, Vice Mayor Bennett. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Goldberg, excuse me, Councilmember Barlow.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, now we'll move to public hearings, and our first public hearing is to consider an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 26 of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, Elections, which establishes the boundaries of boroughs. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, the City Attorney, Mr. William Hutchins, will provide the background and introduce our consultant.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Robert Lofton, the city's consultant from the law firm of Wirewoods, is here to provide the overview of the item, and he will be available for questions after the public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lofton.
It's good to be here with you again. It's always fun to walk into a City Council meeting and be greeted with an avalanche of firemen walking out. My presentation will be very brief. I have two slides to walk over, walk through, very briefly. The first one you've seen before, from the 2020 census, the population for the City of Suffolk was 94,324. In 2010, the population of the City of Suffolk was 84,585. Once it was adjusted for the inmates that are in Western, 170 of those inmates are accounted to the City of Suffolk, which brought the total population to 94,494. With seven boroughs, the target redistricting population for each borough is 13,499. As we've discussed previously, where the legal deviation that's allowed is 5%. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive public comments on the three map options submitted to City Council, which are labeled as Proposal 1, Proposal 2, and Proposal C. Prior to tonight's meeting, the city complied with the notice requirements in Code Section 24.2-306. The plans were advertised on February 2nd and February 9th. There were two comments that I'd like to read that were posted online, and I waited until I left Richmond to drive down here to make sure that no one else posted. So, as of about 3 o'clock, these are the two comments that were posted online. Excuse me. One from, the first one is from Carl Jackson, who said, "I prefer Map C because it restores many of the voting precincts of Eastern Suffolk along Route 337 into the same voting precinct. We have similar issues of managing residential growth from new subdivisions while preserving green space and some farmland." The second comment that was received online is from Robin Lane Holton, who said, "Map C outlines an equitable balance of demographics and keeps major communities intact." At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, the City Council may vote to adopt one of the three options. Once that hap, if you do vote on one of the three options tonight, I'll work with Mr. Hutchings beginning tomorrow and submit that to the Office of the Attorney General for preclearance. I've already had conversations with the head of the Civil Division at the Office of the Attorney General, and they know that a submission from the City of Suffolk is forthcoming. That's the totality of my presentation, and I'll now turn it over for public comments.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and we will have three minutes, and they'll have three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and give their name and address?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jean Carmine. My address is 3616 Labrador Lane. I wanted to speak about the green infrastructure plan that was established here on December 1st of 2016. Karen Firehawk.
I'm sorry, ma'am. This is in regard specifically to redistricting.
I am very sorry.
That's okay.
But keep that file.
Yes, ma'am, I got you.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn White at 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the City of Suffolk, Pewsville, Virginia. This month is Black History Month. I have on my shirt, Black History Month, because I'm going to give you a little bit of history in Pewsville and the redistricting program. First of all, in the redistricting, we looked at the maps. We got three councilmen on council that are serving one area. Now, looking at the maps, we discovered that the map showed Chesapeake, which is part of Pewsville, also listed on the maps. So, in doing that, I did a little summarizing, and if you all got your emails, you noticed that I counted over 26 paper streets. Paper streets, for those who don't know, is not private. Paper streets are streets that were cut out years ago, in the 1800, by the freed slaves that landed in Pewsville, walked from North Carolinas and landed in Pewsville. And when they did, they cut out those streets with a tractor, all of them the same size, length, and what have you. So, one councilperson for one barrel, that's what we're here for tonight. All of the other barrels have one councilperson. They got lots of cities, lots of little towns in their barrels, but they have one councilperson. Why does Pewsville have three? Pewsville have over 26 paper streets. Paper streets are streets that the city closed down and said, "Nobody can build here unless they build the entire street with drainage, sidewalks, and gutters." And we don't have any of that on any of our streets, except for the newest development that just came on Pewsville Road. They did their own sidewalks, did a little extra, but we don't have any. So, I'm telling you tonight, the majority barrel for Sleepy Hole is paper streets. Who's going to vote for him? The Cypress Barrel is a portion, one half side of Pewsville Road. The rest of it is paper streets and wood. Who's going to vote for him? Nasmun Barrel has the majority of people, but also paper streets. So, I ask you tonight, and Mr. Lofton, please look at those paper streets and don't count people. Thank you.
Yeah.
My name is Patricia Jacobson, 915 Delaware Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia. And I am coming here to ask that we adopt Map 3, because it does not break up some of the old neighborhoods, and it will draw three majority districts, three minority districts, and one toss-up. So, I think it's really important, one, that we keep neighborhoods together and communities together, and so I'm for C.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hello, City Council. My name is Pamela Brandy. I live at 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, in Pewsville. As has been mentioned about breaking up communities, or better yet, keeping communities together. Well, Pewsville is not together. We are broken up three ways, Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost. And our councilman, Lou Ward, asks for maps that provide streets, showing exactly where the breakup is. I asked for that as well, right along with other residents wanting to know exactly where is the breakdown of the streets. However, again, as Ms. White have said, that's a bunch of paper streets. Currently, there is a house that is being built, almost completely built, on Y Street, which on one side of Y Street is Suffolk, and on the other side of Y Street is Chesapeake. And again, you all have allowed the builder to raise up the ground level and put septic tanks on the border side on that property, which is on the borderline of Chesapeake. We have nothing but drainage problems, and you targeted military. The question is, how are you going to make sure that those septic tanks are taken care of? Why is it that this historical black community, which is an old community as well, is broken up in three different ways, where they cannot provide to get the right incumbent that they want to represent them? No one has thought about that at all? We supposed to be doing things that is showing transparency and truthfulness? Why can we not have a map where we can see the streets and the dividing line that for weeks, Mr. Lewis, we have asked, and City Council have asked, to be provided and has not been provided for the residents? You all are supposed to be doing what's in the best interest for the community. And recently, Suffolk, you have came along and you have paved some streets in Suffolk, on the Suffolk side. But where does that, where in the paving of those streets really helping the drainage? You haven't cleaned out a COVID or a ditch, which is more needed than those paved streets, and all you did was just put top cover on top of them. You didn't even bring them up to code. So, we ask you to take a look at what you're doing, use and spend the government, the city funding properly, and not misappropriate funds, and take care of the residents that have voted you all in, and just like every other community has, Barrel has one representative, Pewsville should have one as well. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and members in attendance. I'm here, my name is Jayward Hannah. I currently live at 2400 Serlance Drive in Chesapeake, but I'm also getting ready to move to 2390 Copeland Road here in Suffolk. I am one of the assistant pastors at Gethsemane Baptist Church, which is located at 1656 Copeland Road here in Suffolk, and I'm here representing those, my constituents at church as well. After having reviewed all of the, all three maps, and looking at the deficiency of all of them, it is clear to me that Map C is the best map for the city going forward in terms of elections. And so, I would say, and strongly vote for Map Number C. The numbers, the redistricting, the keeping the incumbents in place, all line up to make a good plan for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Johnston. I live at 286 Nasmun Parkway in the City of Suffolk, Virginia. Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, City Clerk. We want to say tonight that we looked at all three of the maps, and even when they came in, and they did show some of the streets that was on the maps. And so, when we look at those three maps, the third map, which is Map C, to me, seems to be the most good map for our city and for our City Council to vote on. So, I hope and pray that that's what you all will do tonight, consider Map 3, that keeps everybody in place and keeps everything in place like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Carl Jackson, 106 Rochdale Lane, and I'm happy that my online comments were also read, you know, for your behalf. I'd also just like to emphasize the same thing that many of the speakers tonight have said, that Map C, I believe, is the best redistricting map for the city. As a resident of the Cypress Borough, I think this map really includes what traditionally we've known as the Cypress Borough. It also includes, you know, puts together many of the neighborhoods in downtown and East Suffolk together where they've been historically. Map 1 seems to divide downtown Suffolk, and I think Map 2 also divides other communities. But I think Map C tends to bring everyone together, so I encourage you to support that. Another thing I'd like you to consider, my voting precinct right now is at the Canaan Baptist Church, which has been a very nice facility, but I'd like you to also consider reintroducing some of the schools, some of the high schools for voting, such as Nasmun River. There was just simply more parking. It's easier to get around there, and it's just something to think about for the next election. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Anson. My address is 4835.
My address is four eight three five Desert Road, and I am in the Whaleyville District. The question before us tonight, this evening, is which plan or map is the best redistricting plan for Suffolk? Why, in my opinion, Plan C is the best plan, because the overall goal was to keep communities together. Previously, the last redistricting we had broke up, uh, a large voting block, Pewsville, to be exact, was broken up and diluted the minority vote. This map puts the Pewsville community back together. One issue of redistricting should have broken up the Driver precinct, which is over five thousand people, but it does not. The argument is that you cannot squeal about breaking up communities and then break up Driver. Another issue, this map will draw three major, excuse me, three majority districts, three minority districts, and one toss-up. Given the projected growth in Suffolk around Bridge Road, Whaleyville, and boy are they building down there, the map does not adjust for the projected growth in those areas. However, of the three maps, Map C, in my opinion, is the better of the three, and if we had to advocate for one, this is the better one to advocate for. I appreciate you giving me the time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please. Do we have any other speakers? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. There have been three ordinances presented for council's consideration, identified as Proposal A, Proposal B, and Proposal C. A motion would be in order. Counsel, Councilman Ward?
Yes, I make a motion that we pick Map C, and I'd like to thank the people for coming and, and really supporting that map. Um, I think that is the best map, and so I'd like council to pick Map C.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of Proposal C from Councilman Ward, Councilman Williams.
Yes, I'd like to second that.
We have a second. Councilman Fawcett?
I, I just had a question for Mr. Lofton.
Mr. Lofton.
Just for, just for the viewers and the people in attendance, the, uh, we went through a progression when you first, we first started this, and first off, I want to thank you again for meeting with me and talking with me several times, uh, on these maps. And, um, we, we first started out with two maps.
Yes, sir.
And then we came back and asked you to develop a third map. Um, so there was probably two maps sitting out there. Can you tell me how and where and what you did to derive to Map C? How did you come to that conclusion? What information drove you to that? So I kind of know for the public where that came from.
Certainly. Uh, Proposal C, um, came from comments, um, that were provided to me from, from City Council, um, and also from some draft, um, ideas that Mr. Ward, um, talked with me about. Um, and then I went back and looked at the two proposals that I gave to City Council initially, uh, 'cause when I was here, uh, previously, um, City Council asked for a third option. Um, so I was working on a third option, um, and looking at how Proposals One and Two could be adjusted, mindful of the City Council's prior direction, that I had to keep incumbents in their borough, both City Council, um, members, but also school board members, and also keeping communities together, um, while staying within the legal five percent deviation that I'm allowed. So, um, you know, part of it was just sitting there on my computer, um, and, I mean, if you want to know sort of how the sausage was made, was sitting there on my computer and, and adjusting lines and seeing how population totals went, um, to see if, um, I could do all of that, keep communities together, um, particularly Pewsville, um, and, and see what I could come up with. So that's how Proposal C was created.
Well, I want to, I want to thank you for taking the time to get those three maps together, and, um, all three maps are, are good, but there is one that stands out amongst the others, and I appreciate you taking the time to, uh, to put those together and, and come here and give us a, a presentation on what we were at and where we're at. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Councilman Johnson?
And I, I only want to take a moment to thank Councilman Ward for bringing, I think that we would have just fun with the two maps originally if we hadn't, he'd been so insistent, and Lou, you were right to be insistent. I think the map that came back, Map C, pulls everything into vision. The districts are set really well, the communities are together. Um, I'm, I'm impressed. It serves me well and holding that, and I think available, and we're all where we belong on the map, so, thank you. I support Map C.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Mr. Lofton, I too would thank you for your efforts and your willingness to engage everyone here on council during the process. Uh, Vice Mayor Bennett, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. I don't, uh, on the maps, I really looked at all three of the maps. Uh, you know, at first, we only had two, and I made a choice, and well, if we had to choose between one and two, I said one. Then with the third map, we said go back and take a look at it. So after looking at the third map, I think it did bring some of the neighborhoods back together better than one and two. So I strongly support, uh, Map C as well.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Lofton. Uh, we have a motion on the floor for approval of Proposal C from Councilman Ward and a second from Councilman Williams. Hearing no other discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a resolution to adopt the capital improvements program and plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Of course, as you recall, during your council meeting on February second, the work session, you received an overview on the proposed FY twenty-three to twenty thirty-two capital improvement plan and program. At that time, um, you, you received a thorough one. Tonight's not going to be that long, I promise you. But, uh, this time, I'll invite, uh, Tealyn Hanson to the podium to give the overview. I was correct on that, right, too?
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, the manager is correct. I will give you a much, much shorter presentation tonight on the capital improvements plan that is being proposed for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-two. Um, I promise this time we only have about five or six slides instead of forty. With that being said, um, you've seen this, uh, grid before. This is the total proposed plan by fund for the, for the first five years of the plan. Um, again, I'll call attention to some of the numbers. The, uh, total for all funds, all five years, is about three hundred and seventy-one million dollars worth of projects. The total for the general government fund, which includes our transportation projects, our parks and rec, public safety, village and neighborhoods, um, and our general buildings and facilities, the total for that, a particular line item for the first five years is two hundred and sixty-two million dollars, and you can see public utilities at just over seventy point six million, fleet at four point one million, stormwater twenty-eight point nine, uh, transit at two point seven, and, and information technology at two point nine. Some of the other numbers on this slide, you can see there, about the third line from the bottom, uh, our geo-debt capacity, uh, is at thirty million dollars per year, and you can see there the low, the line right below that, as proposed geo-bond issuance is just a hair below that thirty million dollars each year, um, leaving us just a little bit of capacity left for each year. I always, um, if you've, if you've heard any of these wonderful presentations that I give on a regular basis, I will caution everybody, the CIP is a plan. It is not a budget at this point in time. Um, if adopted at the conclusion of your public hearing tonight, it will, uh, year one of the plan will become part of our proposed operating and capital budget here in a couple of months when we come back to you. But it is a plan. It is a living document. It, it does change on an annual basis as we go through a very lengthy process to determine what projects are, are needed, uh, and what the funding is on those, on each of those projects. This is the same type of grid, um, and this shows the funding sources for all those, uh, dollar amounts that I just rattled off to you, this and the next slide. So you can see that we've got a mixture of general obligation bonds, um, public utility revenue bonds, transfers from various funds, that is cash funding of the capital, um, projects, um, for the, for the public utilities fleet and stormwater fund. For the transit, information technology, and general government fund, again, we've got a variety of sources, and certainly in the general government fund or the general government projects, we have more of a variety of sources. We have a mixture of private contributions, state and federal transportation grants, um, other types of federal and state grants, transfers from the general fund, transfers from a variety of our other special revenue funds, and of course, our general obligation bond issuance. Uh, we're going to get into the, the pie charts that you've seen before here in the next couple of slides, and so I want you to keep the number two hundred and sixty-two million in your head, because that is what the pie charts are going to, um, break down for you. So this shows the five years of expenditures for that two hundred and sixty-two million dollars worth of projects in the general government category, broken down by function. And so you can see that forty-two percent of those projects are transportation projects, twenty-eight percent are schools, ten percent public buildings and facilities, eight percent public safety, seven percent parks and rec, and five percent village and neighborhoods. I just how they break down when you take into the entire two hundred and sixty-two million dollars worth of revenue sources. The next slide I'm going to show you is going to strip out the seventy-eight, approximately seventy-six point five, excuse me, um, million dollars worth of grant funding and private donation type funding that we have programmed into the CIP for those same projects. So when you take that seventy-six point five million dollars worth of, um, we'll call it non-local revenue out, those percentages change quite significantly, with schools now becoming the, um, predominant, uh, expenditure function at forty-two percent, forty-one percent, excuse me, and transportation now at twenty percent. The others remain in the, around the same, public facilities and buildings, thirteen percent public safety, ten, parks and rec, nine, and village and neighborhoods at seven. So what this chart shows you is of what we consider our local funding, which is our general obligation bonds and our cash transfers, um, where we're spending those dollars compared to the previous pie chart, which showed you where we're spending all of the dollars, including our grant funds. This pie chart shows you of, of the breakdown, um, of where those funding sources come from. So fifty-five percent of the projects are covered with bonds, uh, thirty-one percent are state and federal and other grant type dollars, and fourteen percent is our general fund cash or cash from other funds. So what are the next steps? We are, we are asking you to pull, hold your public hearing, to receive public comment on the proposed CIP as soon as, um, I get done talking. Um, and then we are asking for your adoption of the CIP, the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-two, um, CIP at the conclusion of that public hearing. And then, as I mentioned earlier, once the, um, CIP is adopted, year one of the plan becomes part of our proposed operating and capital budget, um, when I'll be back here in just a couple of months. With that, um, at the conclusion of your public hearing, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We do have the other, the department heads that have projects in the plan, um, available to answer project-specific questions if that is necessary as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will have three minutes to offer their remarks.
This is a public hearing. Will First Speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, and members of council. My name is Jean Carmine. I live at thirty-six sixteen Labrador Lane. I wanted to speak about the green infrastructure, um, that was, um, we first had a meeting on December first of two thousand and sixteen with Karen Firehawk, who's the executive director of the Green Infrastructure Center of UVA. She was invited to this very, uh, chamber, and the place was full of citizens and members of the city. We discussed the Nansman River watershed, conservation of green space, how to protect our natural resources, um, protection of our culture, and respect for responsible growth and historical assets, um, that have smart growth development. We formed an advisory committee that was composed of Suffolk Planning Department, Parks and Rec, and Public Works, and Healthy Suffolk and NRPA. Our vision was to create walkable, bikeable city, um, for Suffolk to become a destination with ecotourism, historic downtown, access to the river, the dismal swamp, increase our tree canopy. We are now a Tree City USA, which I'm very proud of that, and to connect our natural areas and protect our open spaces. Our vision statement was Suffolk will support a culture that is equally concerned with the natural and built environment. Suffolk will become a destination for outdoor recreation with access to the Nansman River and support and protection of its diverse culture. I want to say, too, that I have established a five oh one C three. Um, our name is Suffolk Parks and Trails Alliance. We are partnering with the city with Parks and Recreation. Our mission is to promote quality recreation areas in the city of Suffolk in order to enhance public health, promote tourism, and to advocate for the stewardship of our green spaces. We are taking on the project of getting funding for the kids' zone, replacement of the playground equipment. That's our big project that we've just taken on. Uh, I want to, um, raise money for our, to increase our tree canopy, and since we are a Tree City USA, that is part of what we are expected to do, and, um, to increase our trailways and river access. I really need support from the city, from citizens, and from council, um, to do that. I would really appreciate that. And I wanted to say, the longer it takes to start implementing this plan, which I would love for all of the park, um, council people to, um, to read over this, this is a beautiful plan that Karen Firehawk's group put together, but the longer it takes to start implementing the plan, the more green space will be consumed by development. And how do you preserve already developed land? I, I don't want Suffolk to become like Virginia Beach where they see where they made a mistake and now they're going back and like, "Oh, wow, we've developed all this land, now we've got to go back and buy up land." Well, they've taken down trees that were three hundred years old and put in buildings, and you got to take all that down, and it'll take years to get trees to grow up.
That concludes the time allocated.
Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Your next speaker, please.
My name is Wayne White, four two one six Coltrane Avenue, Suffolk, Virginia. Uh, I, I really would like for you guys to approve the CIP, but, uh, all I wanted to say, I wish that the drainage situation in the Pewsville area will be done before twenty twenty-five. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Carolyn White, forty-two sixteen Coltrane Avenue in the city of Suffolk, Pewsville, Virginia. I'd just like to say, first time or since two thousand and seventeen, we're in the CIP again. We were in the CIP in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, where two million dollars was put for the drainage, and now you're saying you need seven million dollars to go down one street that the developers already taking care of for you? And you said seven million dollars to do a retention pond and do the exact same street, John Street, to the outfall that Vidal put there? Well, this is not acceptable, and we're going to fight it, and we're going to continue to fight it, if we had to go all the way to the White House and let them know what you're doing, 'cause it's not right.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
This is just a repeat. Um, at Juneteenth Day, uh, I recorded all the funding that you all said that you had for Pewsville, even in the Chucka Tuck and, um, um, town hall meeting, things that you said in that neighborhood and what was going to be put in. We have a CIP now that you want to approve. Um, most residents do not have stormwater system in their communities, and definitely not Pewsville or Chucka Tuck. When are you going to do what is right in these areas? Because these people everywhere is suffering. It's time that you actually do what you say you're going to do and not just talk and pass it on and pass it on. Again... Again, we still have this drainage problem that is not a new problem, it's an old problem. It's been going on, and yet we keep repeating the same thing. When are you going to open and clean out the drainage, your COVID? And also, it's amazing how you all act like y'all forgot all about the master drainage plan that is between Chesapeake and Suffolk. Haven't heard about that at all lately. And as it is said already, you all have given permits and all to the developer that have did work on John Street and is still doing work on John Street, which is something that you all should have did yourselves, okay? But yet, you're not paying attention to what's going on in that community, except you're building up everywhere and you're flooding out the older homes and the residents that have been there, that is the backbone of that community, as well as other communities, and you act like you don't care. We are our brother's keeper. We are to take care of our elderly, our disabled, and our youth. So when you talk about Suffolk and doing the right thing, do the right thing for all the residents that are paying their taxes and their fees, and they have voted you all in, and election time will come again, and we will vote then. And I, again, even though I live in Pewsville, I only vote once, and I'm voting on Chesapeake's side.
Thank you, ma'am. Here, can we have our next speaker, please? Do we have any other speakers? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Resolution has been presented for council's consideration, and motion be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Go ahead and move for approval of the CIP.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Goldberg.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
We've got a second. Councilman Williams?
I was going to second, but...
Okay. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor for property located at 201 East Washington Street, zoning map 34G18, parentheses A, parcel 227, account number 353144000, and this is CUP 2021-024. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, Acting Assistant Director of Planning, would give that presentation. He's ready to go with him.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this is a conditional use permit request. It is to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center use at 201 East Washington Street. The property is located in the Suffolk Borough and designated as a part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. The property is owned CBD, Central Business District, and contains around 5,200 square feet. It's a two-story commercial building with a ground floor that is currently being utilized as a permitted retail operation. The second floor consists of apartments which are accessed from a separate entrance, and to the north and west, there are developed commercial structures, owned CBD. To the south is the Health and Human Services Building and a railroad line, zoned fairgrounds, revitalization, and redevelopment district. Notice of violation was sent on August 19th, 2021, for the use of live entertainment being conducted on the subject property without the benefit of a conditional use permit, which is required for these types of uses within the CBD zoning district. And the applicant proposes to utilize only the ground floor to hold public and private events, such as pop-up shops, clubs, meeting, club meetings, birthday parties, paint nights, and open-mic events, comedy shows, live bands, and DJs. The proposed hours of operation for the public and private events are from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday through Monday, 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m. Tuesday through Thursday, and 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight Friday through Saturday. And these would be outside of the hours of operation for the retail shop. The applicant has proposed that two staff members will be on-site during every event. Parking for the property is currently provided by a combination of on-street parking and nearby parking, nearby public parking. There will be no on-site food preparation, as only catering will be offered and allowed for the events. The applicant must obtain required ABC permits from the Virginia Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control if alcohol will be served on-site during events, and music will be provided utilizing a microphone and speakers within the establishment. This would not allow outdoor entertainment use of the property. Lastly, the applicant has proposed sound abatement in the establishment to help offset any impacts to adjacent properties and the surrounding area. Sound abatement will be, will consist of the installation of materials for the ceiling and the walls, the ground floor. The proposed use of the property was evaluated under the Unified Development Ordinance for compliance with our conditional use permit approval criteria and adherence with the goals and objectives outlined within the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Based on this evaluation, staff has concluded that the use can operate on the site in a manner compatible with the existing established land uses within the vicinity, and as such, staff recommends approval with the conditions noted in staff's report. Conditions of note include limitations to the hours of operation that are consistent with like uses, presence of a security officer should alcohol be served, and sound abatement installation in the ceiling and walls, among many other conditions. Lastly, at the Planning Commission's meeting on January 18th, 2022, by a vote of five to three, they have approved a resolution recommending approval of this request with the conditions outlined in staff's report. That concludes my presentation. I will be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a 10, excuse me, this is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? This is to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any speakers to speak in favor? Hearing none. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and the motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I've visited the establishment some time ago, met with the owner, had a cup of tea, which was very good, I like tea, and she's a very nice young lady, trying to make a go of it. And I was concerned at that time that she was not going to be able to, because just offering tea, I didn't, I couldn't see how she was going to make it, make it work. I think she's now trying this, take this opportunity to try to see what she can do. She is insulating the building, trying to keep sound down. You can see by the picture that there's a driveway in between the other buildings, and besides it, there's a furniture building. At night, I would say that not too many people are there, just in case the volume gets there. The only concern I might have would be the parking, but I think there's parking around the corner down the street from it. It doesn't, it's not a big place, so it won't draw a lot. So with that in mind, I'm going to second the motion.
Councilman Ward. Any further discussion of the motion? We have a motion for approval for Councilman Williams and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Before we vote, I do wish the applicant was here. This is a conditional use permit, and my only reservation was in regards to live bands and DJs and sound abatement. We have rather strict noise ordinances. I believe it's, if you could hear it, 50 feet outside, so I just wanted the applicant to be well aware of that throughout the process, because if you do violate one of the conditions of the conditional use permit, you do run the risk of having that revoked. So with that being said, we've got a motion for approval in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship, small, under 6,000 square feet in main sanctuary on property located at 600 West Washington Street, zoning map 34G16, parentheses 3A, parcel 4, account numbers 350639000, and this is CUP 2021-25. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Wine will again provide the staff report on this item.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this is a conditional use permit request to establish a place of worship, small, under 6,000 square feet in main sanctuary on property located at 600 West Washington Street. The property is located in the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. The property is owned CBD, Central Business District, and HC Historic Conservation Overlay District. The proposed use will be located within approximately 1,500-square-foot vacant tenant space. To the east, south, and west, the site is surrounded by a mix of developed commercial and residential uses, zoned CBD. To the north, the property is adjacent to established residential uses. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship, small, under 6,000 square feet in the main sanctuary. The existing commercial building is approximately 15,000 square feet, as mentioned, of which roughly 900 square feet would be used for the sanctuary with 100 seats that are either movable or fixed, with approximately 600 square feet is comprised of multipurpose rooms, two restrooms, and a foyer, including some office space. The applicant indicated that the normal service hours are Sunday school at 10:00 a.m. and worship service at 11:00 a.m., and Wednesday evening Bible study will be at 7:00 p.m. The proposed use of the property was evaluated under the Unified Development Ordinance for compliance with conditional use permit approval criteria and adherence with the goals and objectives as outlined within the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Based on this evaluation, staff has concluded that the use can operate on the site in a manner compatible with the existing established land uses within the vicinity, and as such, staff recommends approval with the conditions noted in staff's report. Conditions of note include limitation on the number of seats inside the sanctuary as proposed by the applicant, and acknowledgement that the final occupancy is to be determined by the building official and fire department at the time of occupancy permit. Lastly, the Planning Commission, at their meeting on January 18th, 2022, by a vote of eight to zero, has approved a resolution recommending approval of this request with the conditions outlined in staff's report. That concludes my presentation on this item, and I'll be happy to address any concerns at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Hello, I am actually Pastor Dana Pepper or Cameron, the pastor of the church, and I live at 203 Doron Court in Virginia, in Suffolk, excuse me, I just moved to Suffolk, in Suffolk, Virginia, 23434. I just want to say that I feel honored for an opportunity to serve the surrounding communities and the people there. We were a small gathering, and we just wanted a place to worship, and we wanted to make sure that we did it legally, so I'm just going through the process, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor? Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition? Are there any speakers to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and the motion be in order. What is the pleasure of council, Vice Mayor Bennett?
Move for approval.
A motion for approval for Vice Mayor Bennett, Councilman Fawcett.
Move, second the motion, ma'am.
And a second for Councilman Fawcett. Any discussion of the motion? Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. May I have the pastor come up, please? Hi, Pastor, how are you?
Good. How are you doing tonight?
Thank you. I normally support churches of all faiths and whatever, what they want to do, but I do have one question for you, is the parking?
Yes.
That is a major issue in that corner.
Yes, sir.
I ride through that corner all the time. We have a church across the street in which they have, they park on the street on that side, on the south side of Broad Street, and then you're on the north side right there, and there's only one side of that street that has parking. Now, you will have some parking in the back.
Yes.
But I don't believe it can accommodate, if you even take four people to a car and you have 100 people, I don't think it can, it can still hold 25 cars or 30 cars. How are you going to handle that? Are you going to go across the street on the other side of North Broad to where the forest is back there? Are you going to try to rent some plot land from them on Sundays and Wednesday nights? What are you going to do to sort of handle that traffic issue?
I don't think it'll be, because of the seats and what we have in there, it won't be 100 people, I can guarantee you that. But I did think ahead and actually ask this attorney that owns the property that's vacant all the way to the end, and he gave us permission to actually use the other side. It's like a gate that comes here.
Yeah, by the fence, there's a fence there, right?
Right, there's a fence, and so it's, I think it's like 20-something parking spaces in the back.
Okay.
And so I think with that and the number of chairs that we have in the sanctuary right now, it should suffice what we need.
Okay. Well, hopefully it'll grow.
Yes, by faith, I believe it. I believe it by faith.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is consideration of an appeal of the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission in regard to request for certificate of appropriateness, HLC 2021-41, for property located at 110 West Finney Avenue, zoning map 34G11, block A, parcel B. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine will provide the update on this also.
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. For your consideration is an appeal of a decision by the Historic Landmarks Commission to deny a portion of the request for a certificate of appropriateness, HLC 2021-00041, for property located at 110 West Finney Avenue in the Suffolk Historic Conservation Overlay District. This structure is located within the original Suffolk Historic District, which was established in 1987. The property is located on Finney Avenue, near North Main, North Saratoga and Clay Streets. It is owned CBD, Central Business District, and HC Historic Conservation Overlay District. The contributing structure originally served as the Old Suffolk High School and was constructed circa 1922 in the American Renaissance style. The building is noted as a three-story structure on a raised basement, and it's distinguished for its decorative brickwork on the projecting wings, which have classical brick pilasters. The applicant is appealing the HLC's decision to deny their request to paint the entire building with a white opaque protective coating, including all brick columns, cornice, dental trim, accent panels, and upper parapet. It's important to note that the 1998 Downtown Suffolk Initiatives Plan mentioned the subject building. building as an anchor in the northwest corner of the historic district. It is highly visible from both West Finney Avenue and North Main Street, and the view shed of the subject property was created and recommended as a part of the 1998 Downtown Initiatives Plan when the road connection was created from Pine Street to North Main Street. The subject structure, if painted white, could potentially lose brick, concrete, and marble details that would significantly change its overall appearance in the structure. In their consideration, the Historic Landmarks Commission consulted the historic district guidelines, which mentions the following of note as it relates to the treatment of historic masonry. One, that the color of masonry units shall be respected. Two, that you should not apply waterproof, water repellent, or nonhistoric coatings in an effort to stop moisture problems, as they often trap moisture inside the masonry and cause more problems and freeze thaw cycles. Water repellent coatings are to be used only if the bricks have been sandblasted. And lastly, it states that masonry, historic masonry should be left unpainted. In conclusion, in denying the request, the Historic Landmarks Commission found that the material appearance, character, and quality of the proposed white opaque protective coating to be incompatible with the requirements of the Historic Conservation Overlay District and associated standards codified in the Historic Overlay District Design Guidelines as it relates to the proposed white opaque coating. That concludes my presentation, and should you have any questions, I will be available following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing, where the first speaker, please come forward and provide their name and address.
Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, council members, Mr. Moore, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lorelei Costa-Moro, and I am the Executive Director and CEO of the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts, and here with me is David Love, who is the Chairman of our Board of Directors. We also have a number of current and past board members here with us this evening, and I just want to ask them to wave at you so you can see who's here. Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. We also want to thank the staff for their time with this project and the members of the Historic Landmarks Commission for their time reviewing this project. We all share a common goal, which is to preserve this beautiful building for generations to come, to ensure that it's safe for visitors, and to ensure that it's used to its fullest extent to serve our community. I have some photos. We brought visuals. Many of you have visited the building, and you've seen the damage, and here are some photographs of that. We have significant leaks and water damage, thank you, David, that have rendered parts of the building unusable, and you can see from some of the photos, we have growing safety concerns as well. This cannot go on. This building is an iconic landmark. It's an economic engine for downtown. It's key to the revitalization of downtown. In a typical year, we host 30,000 people at the Suffolk Center for arts, events, classes, shows, and exhibits, and that includes 6,000 schoolchildren. Every Thursday, we host art, dance, and music classes for 150 local home-school children, and every other Wednesday, when the Suffolk Public Schools close early, we host third, fourth, and fifth graders from all 11 public elementary schools for arts, crafts, and dance classes. We sell the works of 70 local artists in our shops. I could go on and on, but we have limited time, and my point is this: Our building is a vital hub for community arts and arts education.
We can't fix the building halfway. This is, we just crossed the century mark with this building, and it is made of brick, concrete, and mortar. It's porous, it's leaking, it's caused extensive damage throughout the building. I think most of you, not all of you, have been in the building to observe some of this going on, but it needs to be fixed, and we fortunately have a solution. It's a tenebec coating, which will give the building a new look. It's going to be a beautiful look with its white facade, as you see or have seen, and the building will look like an arts center. The city, its taxpaying citizens, private donors have invested substantial money and countless hours in this building, and we're here to protect this investment and protect the building so it can host the arts and serve our community for generations to come. I thank you, and we're here to answer any questions that you have. I'd like to mention our general contractor, Mark Brinkley, and our architect, Clay Dills.
Good evening. My name is Mark Brinkley. I'm president of CW Brinkley Construction, located here at 3,005 Corporate Lane in Suffolk, Virginia. I wanted to give you a little bit of history because I've been working with the Cultural Arts Center for about 10 years because they had contacted me about this water problem that they were having, and at the time that I first got involved with it, we were very careful about how much we spent to fix things because it was going to be an expensive fix to do what we need to do here. So at that time, I suggested they put a clear coating on the east wall, which is the worst wall because we have most of our wind driving rain from that side, and that clear coating did about what it normally does, which is we get three to five years of life out of it, and then it started to leak again. And they came back to me about four or five years ago and said, "Look, we need to start looking at a long-term solution here. What do we need to do?" And I had just completed a project with the architect that we're working with now in Norfolk on a 100-year-old church down there, and we went in, replaced all of the lentils, put new flashing in because the flashing above these windows and doors is only designed to last about 50 years, and this building's over almost 100 years old. So we had to replace all of the flashing, so you have to take the brick out, put the brick back in, put new lentils in. We put new windows in that building, just like we're going to do on this project here, and then we coated that building with this tenebec coating, and I had not used that coating before, and the architect is who had suggested it to us. And that building has been six years since we worked over there, and we have not had another minute's trouble with it. If I felt that the clear coat was as good as the tenebec coating, we would propose that, but we have even tried the clear coat already one time on the east wall, and it's only lasted three to five years. That's normal. The tenebec is about a 15- to 18-year coating, and so we've suggested that the best way to preserve this building is with the tenebec coat, and it has to be a color. It cannot be clear. So when you look at that, plus the cost to coat this building every three to five years with a clear coat is probably, you know, I think we looked at the numbers, it's probably close to $375,000 more to do it clear coat every three to five years as opposed to the tenebec once every 15 years. And so for the viable life of the building and to give it the best bang for the buck down the road, we just felt like that was the best way to go. And so I just wanted to let you know in my experience, what I've seen, and why we came up with the tenebec coat as opposed to a clear coat type system. And now the architect's going to get up here and explain to you about this coating because it's not like a normal paint, and I'll let him take it from there. Thank you.
I'm Clay Dills with Dills Architects. I'm president and owner. You know, our office has been, it was founded some 40 years ago. We've been doing historic work on buildings of this vintage throughout our history, those last four decades. There, many of those are repairs, restorations, additions on buildings very much like the Suffolk Center. All of them involve some sort of envelope repair for water intrusion at some point. These are solid masonry walls, normally with wood joists, wood framing, wood roofs, just like the Suffolk Center, and the deterioration from the wall inward is something that comes up over and over again, especially when you're talking about a 100-year-old building. So we've been through multiple projects where we replace the flashings, the windows, and all those, and one of the key indicators is when the outside walls are letting water through from saturation, right? The wall, it's solid masonry, it becomes completely saturated, and water is getting into the wood framing, into the walls on the inside, and sort of penetrating the building that way. So we've, Mark mentioned that we recently did this church project, very much similar construction, mass, masonry walls, wood framing on the inside, where there was really no other choice because the walls were completely saturated and deteriorating from the outside walls in. And so you look at a 100-year-old building that way, if that's let to go for a while, you have to start replacing floors, walls, roof framing. It starts to eat itself a little bit from the outside in. A little bit about the tenebec coating. Tenebec is the name of the company. It's actually not a paint. It's considered, technically considered, a high-performance coating. That coating is put on in three coats. There's actually a product manufacturer comes out and watches the application and actually measures the application of those coatings. It is engineered to resist freezing and thawing and be a water repellent against driving rain, which causes a majority of the saturation, but it's also engineered to be breathable, so it allows water vapor to escape. Part of the issue, and rightfully so, the HLC has guidelines that talk about painting masonry structures that trap water on the inside. You trap water vapor in there, and it will freeze in there and expand, and then thaw and expand again, and over time, that will loosen masonry further, it'll spall brick, cause further deterioration. So this is a breathable, high-performance coating. Next thing to know about it is that it remains elastic over time. So a normal painted brick or a ultraviolet clear coating that's put on there breaks down and becomes brittle over time. This high-performance coating remains elastic throughout its lifespan. So the building's almost guaranteed to move. It's an old building. We think it sits on wood sills down in the ground, has wood framing on the inside. It's almost guaranteed to shift and move and age that way, and it stays breathable and flexible with that. So really, the point of a high-performance coating and the use of this is really about that saturation of the outside walls. The building has no defense against that, and so we need to knock it down, keep it breathable, maintain the flexibility with it, and the point of all this is really to ensure longevity, right? It's about the durability in the next 100 years of the Suffolk Center.
That concludes the time allocated, ma'am.
Okay, do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. Anybody to rebut? Would anybody like to rebuttal time? Give you some extra time. Okay, public hearing is now closed. City Council is required to address this Landmarks Commission appeal matter as reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify any order, requirement, decision, or determination made by the Historic Landmarks Commission. Therefore, a motion would be in order to either to reverse, to affirm, or to modify the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments first. I want to thank the Cultural Arts Center. They aggressively put together a group that gave us an opportunity, for me, I don't know how many other councilmembers went out, to actually observe the damage that was going on in that building, and the damage from the water that's penetrating through them walls is extensive. And if we don't take and do something to preserve this diamond here in Suffolk, is our Cultural Arts Center. In many places, when you go to other cities, one of the first things you hear from people is, "Do you have a Cultural Arts Center?" Well, if we don't step up and fix this, and it's never going to be what everybody wants, the damage is going to continue to deteriorate the building to the point where there's going to be maybe a large portion of it that we're not going to be able to use, and we're going to lose an opportunity here that we can't rebuild. It would outrun us money-wise if we had to build another Cultural Arts Center in place of this. This has got a lot of history, going back to 1922. I'm sure there's still some high schoolers, I'm sure Don Goldberg is one of them, that went to that school and probably has some compassion for that, and maybe others in the audience that also went to that school, but I'm going to tell you what I had seen and what the presentation showed, what the structure's going to look like, it's almost going to be a brand-new building. It's going to look wonderful. It's going to add a lot of value and change it from maybe the high school to the Cultural Arts Center, which it should possibly be anyway. So we may, you know, get a little more traction from that side of it. I kind of like the product. Studied a little bit. I'm not really afraid of that product. There is that place in Norfolk that they were talking about that looks absolutely gorgeous that they did to work on, or they would have lost that piece of that old church facility that was over there, so they preserved that. So, you know, I'm in favor of reversing the HLC to allow and permit them to move forward with the request that they had to improve that structure. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion for reversal from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Johnson.
I'm going to second that motion. We are very fortunate in the city to have this group of people back here that are running this, keeping this organization up, and they've put more time and effort into this than you can ever imagine from what I can see. This is probably the only solution that they can come up with, is actually going to fix the product. It'll have a different look, but it'll be the Cultural Arts Center, so I'm excited for them. I think it's something we have to reverse the decision on because it's just, the Historic Commission made the right decision, that's what we've given them to do, but it's up to us to give the next right decision to make it work, and I think that these people, it'll be, you don't have to worry anyway because they've got a lot of bosses, so I know it's going to be done appropriately and done right. So with that, I'll second.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fawcett, if it wasn't for some mighty fine teachers that were there, I'd probably still be there. No, I'm absolutely and totally support for this. A lot of good people over the years put a lot of money together to build it, to make it work, to make it a cultural arts center for the city. It's really, you know, we call it Old Suffolk High School, but that's gone. I mean, we have to get over that. It is the Cultural Arts Center. It is the centerpiece for downtown. It really does work, and I think this coating is a great idea. I appreciate Mark and his team working on this. It sounds like they put a lot of time into this, in the study of this. So I'm in total support of this, Mayor, and I'll double second it or double first. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other discussion of the motion? We'd like to make one comment before we vote. Number one, I want to thank the HLC as always for their time. They are tasked with enforcing the regulations of the Historic Overlay District to the best of their ability, and we appreciate the time that they put in. I want to thank the Cultural Arts Center for the services that they provided to our citizens, and in consideration of this, we almost, from our standpoint, we almost got to consider this a quasi, if you would, public building to the extent that not only has there been a considerable amount of private investment, more so, but over the years, the city has invested probably upwards of $14 million, and we have a continued investment every year, recognizing what they're able to provide. So this is also a way to protect our taxpayers' investment, not just strictly a private enterprise. So this is also a way to protect our taxpayers' investment, not just strictly a private enterprise. So with all that being said, I also support Councilman Fawcett's motion to reverse. With that being said, if there are no other discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All right. Our next ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the lease of tract number 3082 for the purpose of farming on certain property owned by the City of Suffolk located at Lone Star Lakes. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
The mayor, vice mayor, members of council, the city's purchasing agent, Jay Smousky will provide the overview of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of city council. This is for the lease at Lone Star Lakes. The lease is a one-year lease with an option to renew for four additional one-year periods. The rent is $3,175 per year. This is for tract 3082. There's no increases in rent for the entire five-year period. We did only receive one bidder for this tract. This is for farming only, no hunting, trapping, fishing, signage, or timber harvesting is permitted. And that's all I have. I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to abstain from the vote and the conversation on this public hearing and this item.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each person is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Where the first speaker, please come forward and provide your name and address. Do we have anyone to speak in favor? Do we have any other speakers? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. The motion being ordered. What is the pleasure of counsel? Councilman Williams.
Yes, Mayor. Before I make a motion, I would like to say a few things. First, let me start by saying that a land lease is a contract between the landlord, and in this case, the City of Suffolk, and the tenant is Councilmember Butler Barlow and her husband, Mr. Barlow. On February 3, 2021, I had a similar situation here before council. My company had contracts that were pre-existing and was in effect prior to me running for city council. One contract had one year, had one year left before it expired, and the other contract had another two years left before that one expired. Let me clear the air. It was not a conflict of interest because they were pre-existing contracts, but the Ethics Council recommended having the city council do a resolution to allow me to continue my contracts. Councilmember Butler Barlow and Mr. Barlow's land lease contract with the city expired on December 31, 2021, and is no longer in effect. The purpose of this land lease contract is to farm a tract of land, number 3082, at Lone Star Lakes to sell the crops for profit. On February 3, 2021, Mayor Duman, Councilmember Ward voted to allow my company to continue our pre-existing contract until they expired. Vice Mayor Bennett abstained. Let me give you the definition of abstain. He formally declined to vote either for or against a proposal or motion. Councilmembers Fawcett, Goldberg, and Johnson voted to end my contract. I've had several conversations with several citizens that were interested in running for public office, but after seeing what happened to me on February 3, 2021, they've decided not to seek public office. That's not a good thing. That's not a good look. So with that said, I move that we allow Councilmember Butler Barlow and Mr. Barlow to enter into a land lease contract with the City of Suffolk. Why? Because I believe that that is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. We have a motion for approval. Councilman Ward?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Ward. Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, Mayor, if you could, if the city attorney could give me a rule of distinction of this, because I don't think Ms. Barlow is the applicant. Is that correct?
Well, she may not be the applicant, but she does have a personal interest as defined by the Code of Virginia for, under the Conflicts of Interest Act. So in section 2.2310, there is an exception for a officer of a government agency, in this case, a city council member, to lease property from the agency if they do not participate in the lease itself, on the part of city council, which is why Councilmember Butler Barlow is abstaining from participating in this action. It is up to the rest of the city council to decide whether or not to approve that lease.
So there is, is or is not a conflict?
There's a conflict, there is an exception, so that's why there's no conflict.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. The second, Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Attorney, is there not a difference between having a contract in which the city is paying them as opposed of a group paying the city?
In the Conflicts of Interest Act, there's not a distinction for that. There is a distinction, there are several, when you go through the Conflicts of Interest Act, there's a section that covers contracts with the public body. So there are exceptions based on what type of contract it is. So there's exceptions for the sale of goods, there's exceptions for the sale of services, and in this case, there's an exception for leases. And each of those have their own separate requirements of what must happen or not happen in order for the public body to vote on that contract. For instance, in the case of services, the services contract requires approval of the body before the member can enter into that contract. In this particular case, there's not that initial step. The only step that the code provides for, and I'm using only the code, the code provides that that member cannot participate in the decision on the lease.
So is there a conflict of interest here?
There's, so, to be clear, the council members, the council member does have a personal interest in a contract, but it is not a prohibited contract as long as the council member does not participate in the decision to award that lease. It's not a simple, is there a conflict of interest? It's whether or not that council member can engage in that transaction. And so, under the exception for leases, the council member can have a lease with the locality as long as they don't participate in the decision.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And William, say what you said again. I can't hear some parts of it.
Yes, sir. So under section 2.23110 of the Code of Virginia, which is part of the State and Local Conflicts of Interest Act, in this case, Councilmember Butler Barlow has an interest in the contract that's at issue before city council, i.e. the lease. In that section, it provides an exception, normally, a council member is prohibited from being in a contract with their locality unless there's an exception. For a lease, the exception, to meet the requirements for the exception, Councilmember Butler Barlow may not participate in the decision to award the lease. If she does not do that, then it is permissible for her to have a lease with the City of Suffolk.
Y'all gotta, just forgive me. I just have to ask this question. I think William normally asks. Why is it that, just tell me, that's the one here. Why is it that you have, you got a different type of meaning of what you're saying? So tell me the meeting about when y'all advertised with a certain paper. I already have a newspaper, been had before I got on council, and I can't get no advertising when you trying to reach the public. Just explain that to me, then I, since you got all these different type of meetings.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I might hit one.
Let me back up and say that in both cases with Councilmember Williams and Councilmember Butler Barlow, this advice is really coming from the FOIA council. We ask because my opinion doesn't keep anyone from being charged with a crime if you violate the act. So we always direct council members to ask them for these opinions. So there are different exceptions for different types of contracts, and so different types of contracts have different requirements, and so it depends on the contract, and I'll be happy to work through your contract, but the simple answer is the General Assembly wrote this so that there are different rules for different kinds of contracts.
Okay. I know you all recall City Manager Miles Stanley. When he was City Manager, he gave me an ad from the city for a whole year, a whole year. Was it all, you know, so what I'm saying is, all of a sudden now, are you saying it's up to council to make the decision?
I would say that, so I don't know enough about the ads and all that to what it falls in the criteria. I'm not here to give you advice on that at this point. I'll be happy to talk with you. My advice to you would be to get an opinion from the Ethics Council to, they're the better place for you to find out whether or not you have a conflict.
Okay. I'm going to ask you another question. When Councilman Williams came, could we have made a decision about his contracts?
So city council had the authority to decide that the city would continue to contract with Councilmember Williams. In that particular exception, that is the step. The step is, is that the council has to decide whether or not the member can contract with the city. So it's a little bit different, it's a two-step process, instead of, in this case, the General Assembly only had one step.
So let me ask you another question. So just like Councilwoman Williams said, if there come another time when entrepreneur runs and wins, so the rule is that the council could make the decision, some type of conflict of interest or something like that, if you're dealing with the city?
Again, it depends on what type of contract they're entering into. So if it's a contract for goods, that's, again, a different exception. If it's a contract for services, that has its own exception. There are a number of different contracts enumerated in three different sections of that Code, of the Conflicts of Interest Act, that cover exceptions for contracts. So it depends on the type of contract, which is why we recommend that council members go to the Ethics Council for them to give you advice on what is and isn't a conflict, or what exceptions you may fall under, and the steps to make sure you're within that exception.
So after this passed, if it passed tonight, Councilwoman Barlow, she had to be abstained again, or she had to do the same thing all over, they got to do the same thing all over again next year, whatever, whatever, or what?
When the lease expires?
Okay.
Yes, we will have to revote on the lease, but this lease is for one year and has renewals, so it will be a little while before it comes back before you.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Yes. Let me say, to make my point again, the contracts that my company had were in effect. One had one additional year before it expired. The other one had two more years before it expired. This council chose to take those contracts away from me because it was this council's But I'm not the type of person, and it's not in my DNA, to feel as though if I've been done wrong, I'm going to do somebody else's wrong. So I want to make myself perfectly clear. I am in favor of Councilmember Barlow and her husband to enter into that lease. The difference is, my contracts were still in effect, and Councilmember Barlow expired. That's the difference. I was, it was recommended by the council, Ethic Council, again, for me to have this council to allow me, to do a resolution to allow me to continue. Let me clear up something else. Word has it that, you know, I lost $150,000. Well, let me clear the air. It was over $300,000 that I gave up because I wanted to serve my people and the people of this city, and the people who believed in me enough to elect me as their council person. I could have walked away from it, but I didn't. I could have easily given it up and say, "No, I'm going to keep the contracts." But I believe in doing what's right. I told the people I was going to run, and I was going to run to make a difference, and I was going to be that voice. And yes, yes, I lost a lot of money, but it was worth it. It was worth it. So again, I'm asking this council to approve the lease agreement for Councilmember Butler Barlow and her husband.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you. Mr. We, I know we have talked about this in the past when this first came up, about the conflict, and the way I understood it when we were talking about it is basically it was a big difference in between the two contracts. Maybe you can explain, or you might have already explained the difference. I was sort of under impression is that the person that was renting the land was actually paying the city and not collecting from the city. So therefore, there was a difference there of actually income versus revenue coming in. So releasing the land have revenue coming to the city, but the other contracts would be going money from the city out to whichever individual company or whatever it might be. And that's where I had the difference. I wanted to make sure that I was being upfront with whoever I deal with, because I believe in that. I don't, one shoe fits everybody with me. If what's good for one is good for all, so I don't believe in picking and choosing. So I just want to make sure that when I make decisions, that I'm following protocol, and make sure that I understand whether I'm right or correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so the default rule for a council member is, a council member may not have a contract with their locality. And then the Code contains a number of exceptions. In this case, we are talking about a lease of property, and the lease of property does not require city council to approve Councilmember Butler Barlow to bid on the contract. In a contract for services, which is... In a contract for services, which is what Mr. Williams had, there is a provision that the, that City Council must give initial approval for him to enter into the contract before the contract can be awarded. It's a different process than for a lease. So in both cases, we are following the rec, we, we have, each council member asked for advice from Ethics Council. Ethics Council provided the advice to the City Council members, and the City Council members have acted in a way that was advised to them. So in this particular case, it does not require Councilmember Butler Barlow to get permission to bid on this particular lease. It does prohibit her, because she has a personal interest, from participating in the vote or the conversation about the lease.
Thank you. I hope that clears up a lot of minds with the difference. It is a difference. It's not the same, not the way I look, and the way you explaining, it is a difference, right?
Yes, they are two different exceptions with two different rules.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Councilman Williams?
Yes. Williams, you just told Mr. Bennett that Councilmember Butler Barlow does not have to get council approval to enter into the lease agreement. Is that what you say? But there is an exception.
Yes, sir. So, so in this particular instance, Councilmember Butler Barlow operates as any other person that's entering into a lease with the city. So it's just merely approval of the lease by the city, which is different than this contract for services, which requires the offer or to get approval of City Council, if that person's a City Council member, before they make an offer on the contract.
Okay. Perfect. Now listen to what you just said now. I wasn't asking council for approval to bid on the contract. The contracts were already awarded and were in effect. I already had them. I wasn't asking council to allow me to bid on the contract. I already had it. It was already mine. You took it, they took it from me. Now, Mr. Bennett, you sit up there and you...
Let's not, don't direct your comments specifically to Mr. Bennett. Question?
I've already made a motion that we accept it. I'm, I'm done.
Here we go, motion for approval and acceptance. Before we vote, let me just try to clarify things to some extent. When it comes to the conflict of interest, then there's a different set of guidelines, like the city attorney said, as to whether it's a lease or a contract. If it's a lease, or if it's for goods or services. If it's for goods or services, it falls into a different requirement, if you will, as far as whether you're able to bid on it. It's just like me, I used to fix police cars until I got elected to City Council, and now I don't do it. There is some ways to qualify to do it, but it's a lot of hurdles to go through. You have to really prove that what you're offering is something that the city cannot get someplace else. In regards to Mr. Williams' contracts, and I remember, because I spent a lot of time looking at it, you had an existing contract with several renewal clauses within the body of the contract. So this council had the option to do one of two things. Allow for the automatic renewal of the existing contract. If it was a three-year contract with two one-year renewals, and if we still within the existing three-year contract, you can't, nobody can take that away from you. Once it came up for renewal, then our options were to allow you to renew the contract under your existing contract, and if we didn't want to do that, to allow you to bid on it again, which would open it up to everybody else, but it would still allow you to bid. So what happened is, we didn't get approval for either one of those options, but those were up to council at the time. So, but it is different than what we're talking about with councilperson Butler Barlow, because that is a lease, and because it's a lease, if I understand it correctly, you know, there is no conflict of interest in her requesting to, to, to bid. There was no conflict of interest with her to bid. So with that being said, we got some more?
Yes.
Okay, one more time?
Yes, sir.
Then I might cut you off.
One more time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Williams?
If I'm not mistaken, the way this public hearing for this conditional use, for, toward allowing Councilmember Butler Barlow to accept, or we give her the permission to enter into this lease, now, it's for one year. It's one year, with a renewal clause, just like my contract, with a renewal clause. Now, whether it's a lease agreement, or whether it's a contract for service, it still have the same thing. It ends and it renews until it expires.
Right, I would, I would suggest that we go, you made a motion for approval, and we've got a second, let's go ahead and, and vote on it, and the city attorney can also, if you wouldn't mind researching this, to see exactly what Mr. Williams is alluding to as far as any renewal clause, and what may or may not be required with it being a lease.
Mayor, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, even if William went back now and he reviewed everything, I've lost the contract.
Yes, sir.
So what difference it makes at this point? I just want to make sure that the next person, who's in a similar situation like I am, and, and Councilmember Butler Barlow, who want to serve our city, is not stripped of their livelihood.
Yes, sir. I think, I think you, you've, you've made your point. Vice Mayor Bennett, one more time. Let him go, and then we gotta get on.
Well, I, I want to say this here with, I didn't vote yes or no for a contract. I abstain. That's not a yes vote, it's not a no vote.
We know that.
Mayor, I appreciate that.
No, let's just, just keep it sane. Councilman Ward, we're gonna take, we're gonna ask for a motion for a brief recess here for a few minutes. We'll, we'll clear it up in a minute.
It's clear.
Councilman Ward.
I mean, I, I don't know about all that. I just don't see if Councilman, Councilman Barlow is on counsel, and I don't know, they just want to do a one-year lease, we gotta do it...
The contract.
Because that's what the contract say.
It's a contract similar to what Councilman Williams said. It's, it's a contract that is a one-year lease with an automatic four additional one-year periods if you want to take it. So to Councilman, to Councilman Williams' point, you know, there, there may be a point there, I don't know, because I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know what contract law is versus, you know, a, a contract for services. So what I'm asking the city attorney to do is to research exactly what you asked about, and see if there is a difference between, when it comes to conflict interest, as far as that contract, versus a, a bid for services, and with the renewal clause, would it necessitate Councilperson Butler Barlow coming back, just like you had, in other words, and understand what you're saying, everybody needs to be treated the same, that at the end of that one year, then technically it is a renewal, like your contract was. So to ensure that everybody's treated equitably, I would ask the city attorney to research that and let us know, with the difference being. And with that being said, I think at this point, we're gonna, you know, I'm gonna ask for like a 10-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I, I want to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I want the ordinance and everyone else to know one thing. If I say yes, I mean yes. If I say no, I mean no. Nobody makes me change my mind. If I abstain, that does not say I agree or disagree. I have that right. You have the same right to do anything when you vote, the way that any council member want to vote. I do not take instruction from anybody. I don't look at color when I take a vote. I look at issues, and I make sure whatever I vote, I can answer to anyone that approaches me and asks me a question about why did I vote, the way that I voted, I can answer them, I can give them an answer. And I don't have to answer to anybody and tell them I'm voting the way that you want me to vote because of any specific reason. So with that being said, I want to make sure, when I ask a question, I want to treat everyone the same, regardless of who you are. So I want everybody to understand that. No one have Leroy Bennett or tell me how to vote, when to vote, or when not to vote. I will not do that, and I will not accept that.
I want to say something, since he said that. Let me say something. No, do you mind me saying something? Well, you, when we had the comp thing, you went over and over and over again. Let me say this, okay?
A little quick.
Oh, I will be quick. I sat here tonight, and with this comp plan, I could not answer the question right then and there. But if I would have abstained, for what reason, I could, would have abstained. So when you say you not, nobody controls you what you say, or why you say yes or no, I had to make up a, a yes or no answer.
Okay.
Okay? So it, that, that, that right there, then, that don't, no. I had to make a yes or no answer. It wouldn't have been fair for me to sit here and say abstained to them people that came.
Okay, I appreciate what you're saying. At this time, we've been at it a couple hours, let's take a 10-minute recess, and we will be back in about 10 minutes, which is eight after. is 8:00 after. Council is back in session. We currently have a motion for approval and a second, and I hope and pray we don't have any more comments, discussion. Hearing none. Then Clark?
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Abstain.
Mayor Johnson, excuse me, Mayor Doeman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven, excuse me, one, two, three, four, five, six, six to two. And then we have an abstention from Councilmember Barlow and an abstention from Vice Mayor Bennett.
Six point oh one. Okay, we have no ordinances this evening. We have no resolutions. We'll move to staff reports, and we have a staff report by our city assessor. He will give us an annual report. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview, or Mr. Assessor provide an overview. Mr. Managers, I've been busy.
I thought you wanted me to reduce the assessment.
I figured you'd also do the assessments, too.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Here tonight to present to you the results of my annual reassessment of real property here in the City of Suffolk. My presentation tonight will provide a brief overview of the health of the real estate market in Suffolk during calendar year 2021. It will provide a look at the estimated assessments and a brief summary of where we go from here. Chapter 32 of Title 58.1 gives me the authority to do what I do, which is list and maintain records on all real property within the city and to ensure that the burden of taxation rests equally upon all property owners. Assessments are to be uniformed, and we are to strive for 100% of fair market value. There are many definitions of fair market value out there, but there's only one that's really stood the test of time and, more importantly, the test of the courts in the state of Virginia. And that's on the screen above. I won't read our mission statement for our office, but I will say this is our purpose for doing. It's a statement of what we do and why we do it, and it also affirms my duty to the service of the citizens of the city. Some of our duties involve data collection, data analysis, record-keeping and verification, and of course, providing assistance to the public. All right, turning our focus to the real estate market for calendar year 2021. Following a few slides will highlight some of the key statistics from the market. First of all, interest rates, which is the main driver here. They were, again, at all-time lows. The average annual 30-year mortgage was below 3% for the year. It's just amazing how this fought off the pressures of inflation and everything and remained so low, but I think we're going to see a change coming up here soon. Total transfers in the city were up for the second consecutive, seventh consecutive year, and this was with inventories very low, and it was quite a sharp jump in transfers Of everything I've seen, this is the one that shocked me the most. The number of foreclosures this year was at 29. I remember standing up here last year when I looked at that number in the 50s, and I didn't think that would ever happen again because last year during the pandemic, there was a moratorium on foreclosures. That didn't exist during 2021. I don't know if banks are holding them in their back pocket or not, but this is a number that's really, really low, and I think it's a good sign. Another really good indication of the market, the median days on the market for sold properties was 12. It's an indication of several things. The low rates driving the market, but also low inventories, so the houses didn't remain on the market very long. And there's a lot of, a lot of homes that never even got on the market that sold. So they're not included in this, but that number is quite impressive. The median sales price for single-family homes in the city is $338,100, up from $295,000 in 2020, and that's more than a 14.5% increase. This is a comparison of the seven cities median sales price, and as you can see, we did quite well here. I use the same source of information for all these cities, but I caution myself when I look at Virginia Beach. That number just doesn't jibe with me in this market, so everything else seems, seems okay, but that Virginia Beach number just doesn't sit right with me. But that's what, that's what the source told me it was. So anyway. All right, next we'll turn our attention to the commercial market. In the commercial market, we split up into various segments. First, multifamily. Vacancy rates are down to 4.1% from 5% a year ago. This is nearly 3% below the long-term average citywide. The number of delivered units was only 42. However, there are currently more than 1,100 units under construction in the city. Along with that, the number of absorbed units for 2021 was 111. The average annual rent growth the past decade was 2.4%. In 2021, it was 7%. And average rents now stand at $1,520 a month, which is well above the regional average of 1,310. The market price per door for sold units in Suffolk is over $213,000, a 9% increase over the past year. The industrial market. We see really strong numbers reported in 2021 here in Suffolk. Vacancy rates sitting below 1.5%, well below the long-term average of 6%. The amount of delivered square feet in 2021 was 4.2 million, which was outpaced by the amount of square foot that was absorbed at 4.5 million. Rent growth of a little more than 10% is the highest in the city in over a decade, but at $6.20 a square foot, it remains well below the average for the metro area. There's currently 4.1 million square feet of industrial space under construction, which will increase inventory significantly. Retail. The retail segment of the commercial market is broken down into two separate areas for analysis. The northern Suffolk retail area and the downtown retail area. The vacancy rates in North Suffolk sit at about 9.8%, contrasted by the downtown area, which has a vacancy rate less than 1%. The difference can be explained by the fact that North Suffolk retail market is delivering new units right now, while downtown has delivered no new units in the last year. North Suffolk retail market has an absorption rate of negative 26,000 square feet, while the downtown retail segment attained a positive net absorption rate of 20,100 square feet. Rent growth was positive in northern Suffolk, but slightly down in the downtown area. Finally, sales prices per square foot in the north end are at $175, which is higher than the region's average of slightly more than $160 a square foot. And in downtown, the sales price per square foot is well below the region's average of 116 a square foot. And finally, the office market. Vacancy rates fell slightly in 2021, and at 2.8% is well below the 10-year average. New construction in this segment is slow, with an estimated 5,000 square feet delivered in 2021. This is not necessarily a bad thing, as it reduces supply-side pressures on vacancy rates. Net absorption rates are well above the five-year average at more than 38,000 square feet in 2021, and sales volumes have remained steady over what they were in 2020. So those last few slides provided a lot of positive information with regard to our real estate market, and I want to turn now to what, how it resulted in our reassessment. So we have 41,048 parcels in the city, and they're split. 36,885 of them residential, 2,556 commercial, and 1,607 are agricultural. Our residential property values increased by 781 million. Commercial values increased by a little less than 445 million, and ag values increased by over $800,000. The total citywide increase is just north of 1.2 billion, or 10.77%. This slide is pretty self-explanatory. You can see our total value comparison from last year to this year, the percentage increase at 10.77%. The dollar value, the increase, and the impact on revenue at a little over $13.5 million. Our Disabled Veterans Program is continuing to grow with now over 1,000 recipients, and the Senior Citizen Tax Relief Program has decreased by over 100 participants since this time last year. Okay, I'm not real pleased with the way this slide looks, but what this is, it's a piece of our notice that will go out to the taxpayers. And there are certain things that are required to be on here, and one of them is, I want to draw your attention to, is the percent change from the previous year. And understand that I'm bound by code to reach 100% of market value, fair market value. We're not driven by a percentage change, so that percentage can be fairly high sometimes, and it's shocking for homeowners to see that. But we are bound by code to get to 100% of fair market value, and we're not bound by a certain percentage. So I just wanted to let you all know that because we are going to see some big increases this year, obviously, and you're probably going to hear about it, I guess. So, but we'll take care of it. Going forward, we'll be sending out assessment notices by the end of the first week of March. Informal appeal hearings will be heard through the 1st of April. Board of Equalization hearings will be conducted in May, and their decisions will be made final by June 30. And staff will continue to process new construction and alterations for the end of the fiscal year supplements. The land book will be produced at the close of the fiscal year and will be effective July 1, 2022. Before I answer any questions, a couple things I want to say. This reassessment is the culmination of a lot of hard work by my team, and my team is a very talented, dedicated, caring group of people who I've found really anxious to learn and grow, and they've just been a joy to work with and wanted to get that on the record. Also, I wanted to say that today is my one-year anniversary in this job, and I'm very pleased to be here. And from the elected, to the appointed, to the department heads, and all the staff in this building, everybody's been welcoming, very helpful, and just a joy to work with. And I appreciate that. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. This is not a question or anything of that nature. It's more of a statement. I really appreciated your effort over this last year. It has been exceptional. I've not had those calls that I was getting complaining about the assessments and everything else, just whatever. I don't know what they will hold in the future, but I feel very confident that whatever they are, we can answer them and we can get them settled. And I just appreciate your effort and your team's effort of making it a really good year, and the numbers look good for us, and I appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. How did the Amazon figure into this?
So Amazon was already on the books July 1 last year at 75% complete. So we will finalize that sometime this spring and add the additional 25% of value this year.
Okay. First, the next thing is, thank you for being here. One year is great. It's a good mark to be here first year. You got a lot accomplished. I'll go along with what Don Goldberg said. The phones are not hitting us as hard as they were prior to your arrival. So you evidently accomplished a lot. Appreciate the fact that you reached out and got a great deputy assistant assessor.
We're here tonight, by the way.
Yep, and that all, I want to thank all your employees for stepping up in there because obviously, this report shows some of the work that was done, and I certainly appreciate it. And I know everybody is not appreciative of their tax assessment, but it's the nature of the beast, and no matter where you go, that's And no matter where you go, you're going to get one of those. So again, thank you for doing what you do. Keep doing it. And if we can help in any way, feel free to let us know. Thank you.
I want to add one thing that I didn't say earlier. This assessment is a preliminary number. I hope you all realize that. It's not effective till July one. We still have to go through appeals. I don't, you know, I'm very, very comfortable with this reassessment. I always question as I'm going through it, okay, you know, am I pushing too hard, that kind of thing? I feel very confident defending all of these assessments. I really do. We've got really good data, really solid data, to prove these out. And we've been over them and over them and over them. You know, a lot of hard work, obviously, by my team to do that. But the number in here is probably the bottom number. This number will grow by July first. So we'll have a lot of new construction to put on between now and then. So we won't get any more appreciation out of it, but we will get a lot more value in new construction going forward.
I'm Billy. I just want to say thank you, too. Like everybody else, I've seen such a difference. I really have had very few calls. Your staff's done a great job. And this is, in my opinion, is probably one of the best ones we've gotten from the way it's presented. It's really easy to read, and it allows us to understand it. And I do recognize your job's tough, but you just have to get the facts. I mean, that's what the public's going to have to understand. That's all we can do. But I do appreciate you being here. It's very good.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you so much. I even myself see a difference. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
For your leadership. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just kind of piggyback on what everybody else said. They're exactly right. I haven't really had any issues at all in regards to the assessor's office. Obviously, this is great news. I do have a question in regards to, and you may not be able to answer this right now. Residential property values increased by seven hundred and eighty-one million dollars. How much of that is new construction?
I don't want to say-
You get back with me on that.
I think I know what the number is, but I don't want to spit something out that's not-
Because I think, you know, for our taxpayers, that's an important number. We talk about a seven hundred and eighty-one million dollar increase. You know, what percentage of that is our existing homeowners and their existing reassessments, which means that they're going to have a tax increase versus, you know, new properties coming online, which is a little bit of a different consideration. So I would be interested to see, you know, what those numbers are as we move towards, you know, budget time. The fact that we have the highest median sales price in Hampton Roads is pretty impressive. I mean, it's really impressive, at three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And as I mentioned, obviously, bottom line, this is great news. But I was also doing a little bit of reading and a little bit of listening. And the prediction is, if the feds increase the rates and they creep up anywhere three and a half to four percent, then property values at a minimum will probably level off. And then anything more than that, they could actually decrease some. So like some of the things that we discussed, you know, this evening, as far as sustainability, recurring expenses versus recurring income. I mean, if that happens, then, you know, we've got some tough decisions to make down the road. But this is excellent news, and thank you for your professionalism and everything that your department does.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. We have a, this time, we have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, March second, twenty twenty-two, at four P M., unless canceled. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
So moved.
Motion for approval. Councilman Ward, second from Councilman Ward. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Labarlo. Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, could please explain the guidelines?
Each person participating under the item of business entitled "non-agenda speaker" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, use profanity, or promote private business ventures. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order immediately by the presiding officer, and yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is John Ducote, one oh four Huber Road, Newport News, regarding crime.
All right. Hi, John Ducote. Thank you, guys, for listening for a minute tonight. So a situation happened on January twenty-sixth, off of Sholto Sil Road on Deerfield. My aunt lives there. She's been there for about thirty years. I used to be a resident of Suffolk and lived here myself. I moved away a couple of years ago. Five A M., she was robbed at knife point in her home. She heard a noise. She woke up. She went to go look to see what the noise was, and there was a gentleman in her hallway with a knife. The guy asked her for money, asked her where she had money in her house. She got her purse. She gave him the money that was in her purse, and then he asked her to go back to her room. My aunt's kind of a strong-willed woman, I guess we'll say, so she sat down in her living room and just said, no. No, I'm not going to go anywhere. The guy took the money. He left. When officers arrived to the house, they asked her questions like, what kind of medications are you on? Do you ever suffer from hallucinations? Things along those lines, you know, anything but, how are you? Do you have something to go off of that maybe could describe this gentleman for us? All the leading questions were basically, did you dream it? Did you hallucinate it? Did you take drugs that may have made you had some sort of out-of-body experience? Wednesday, nobody talked to any of the neighbors as far as law enforcement. Thursday, nobody spoke to neighbors as far as law enforcement was concerned. Continued Friday, Saturday. Saturday, my aunt was not staying at her house. She was staying at a family member's out of fear. You know, somebody broke into her home. So Saturday, the same person that held her at knife point broke into her home three different times, once at seven thirty, once at eleven thirty, and once again at three A M. The reason that we have these times is because Sunday, I went out to her neighborhood and I spoke to her neighbors, none of which had been spoken to by anybody from Suffolk P D, Suffolk Sheriff Department, or anybody at all. Couple of those neighbors actually made phone calls to the police department and stated that they had videos of this person coming up her driveway, riding their bike down the road. They had some things that maybe would help find this person. Nobody came to talk to them. I got copies of the videos from all these neighbors Sunday evening, and called Monday to the Suffolk Police Department, tried to provide these videos and things. Another note, when the police came Sunday, nobody once again spoke to any neighbors. So her house was burglarized Saturday night while no one was home. Nobody spoke to anybody. I don't know how you guys' neighborhoods are, but even in Newport News where I live, every other house has a Ring doorbell nowadays. There's a camera almost everywhere now. So you'd think someone would ask. But so Monday came. I spoke to a few people. I was unable to get calls back from the detective, which is Attard, is the one that was assigned to it originally. I called all the way up from Attard to, I spoke to another sergeant. I spoke then to Lieutenant Merrick. I spoke to a Major Bowie. I called the city manager's office. I called the mayor's office. And pretty much anybody in between that was willing to listen for two minutes. Monday, they made it out to the neighborhood, and they spoke to the neighbors that I had told them I had already previously spoken to and gotten the videos from. They didn't, all of the neighbors, as well as the videos, showed a person riding their bike from their house, out of their driveway, to my aunt's house the night that she was robbed at knife point in the morning, as well as when the person robbed her three separate times. That's how I have the times to provide you guys, is because of the videos of this gentleman on his bike, coming and then leaving with items, TVs, computer monitors, things like that, big items. So the police didn't talk to him. The police didn't go to anybody's house. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the answer I got every day that I called was, we're unable to make contact with this gentleman. The gentleman's name is Kevin Lee Breeding, senior. We're unable to make contact. We're unable to make contact. We're unable to make contact. He is on probation in the city of Suffolk. His probation officer is Gary Ellis. Per his probation, per their office, he has waived his Fourth Amendment right, meaning that, you know, if the law enforcement in Suffolk would have contacted the probation office and said, we're trying to make contact with this gentleman. Could you come by? That gentleman could have entered his residence and maybe looked for stolen belongings, anything else along those lines. Figured something out, done something, you know? And that's my main issue here today. Nothing was done. The way that this guy was caught is Wednesday of last week. I'm still doing my regular calls every day. Tuesday, we're unable to make contact. Wednesday, we're unable to make contact. Come Thursday, the phone call that was made, I got a call from my aunt saying that Kevin Lee Breeding, senior, is on the front page of Wavy Ten, having been arrested for breaking and entering, holding an older woman at knife point, beating her, attempting to rape her, and then trying to get her into a car to take her to a bank. He's in jail now. Suffolk P D on Thursday still didn't know that Mr. Breeding was in jail in Portsmouth on Tuesday. Because when I called Wednesday, we're unable to make contact. When I called Thursday, we're unable to make contact. When I called the probation office, once again, this guy had no idea where this guy was. And I'm calling his office every day saying, hey, I've got videos of your guy robbing people at knife point, breaking into people's homes. Nobody did anything. So I don't really know what the council, mayor, vice mayor, city manager, anybody here can do for me today. But what I wanted was y'all to listen, and maybe somebody can talk to someone about doing it differently next time.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
Thank you.
Audrey Dennis, eighteen forty-nine, Oyster Bay Lane, representing the Suffolk Clean Community Commission regarding the services of the Suffolk Clean Community Commission.
Good evening. I'm Audrey Dennis, and this is Sharon. We're two of the twelve commissioners for Suffolk Clean Community Commission, also known as Keep Suffolk Beautiful. We're here tonight to talk a little bit of trash. I've been a commissioner for less than a year, but I've been volunteering for K S B for a couple of years. I'm actually originally from the state of Maine, but now I'm proud to consider Suffolk my home. I'm very excited to work with this great group of people to help improve our city. Our commission meets the third Monday of every month to discuss and plan upcoming events and projects to work towards our mission. We all have a passion for the community, as well as what our commission stands for in promoting public interest and improving the environment, planning and coordinating programs for recycling and litter prevention and control, as well as working on beautification projects. This past year, we've accomplished a lot. We have hosted four recycling drives and numerous street cleanups. The total amount of weighable items we have collected or removed this year in Suffolk is equal to a hundred and four thousand four hundred and seventy-six pounds, or fifty-two point two-four tons. And this does not include items that we've collected for donations, such as clothing, shoes, eyeglasses, and food. Our four recycling events resulted in two thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds of recyclables, eight thousand five hundred and eighty pounds of electronics, three thousand five hundred and twenty pounds of clothing, six thousand sixty pounds of wares, over two hundred and eleven items of hazardous waste, nineteen thousand five hundred and ten pounds of paper shredding, one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven tires equalling thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-four pounds, three hundred and sixty-nine flags properly decommissioned by the Boy Scouts, three hundred and ten pairs of shoes collected for Souls for Souls, four hundred and ninety eyeglasses, eleven hearing aids donated to the Lions Club, seven hundred and eighteen pounds of car batteries. Our street cleanups had nine hundred and seventy-three volunteers, which equaled two thousand one hundred and thirty-four total hours donated, one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight bags of trash, and ninety-seven tires collected. This was thirty-one thousand thirty-four pounds total of bags and tires combined. And this doesn't include the furniture, shopping carts, and TVs. Yes, we've collected those things from the streets and rivers. In twenty twenty, an hour of volunteer work is valued by the city at twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents per hour. So from the cleanups and the Adopt a Street program alone, the two thousand one hundred and thirty-four hours volunteered has saved the city sixty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. We're very, very proud of all of our accomplishments this past year, especially with all the barriers that we've had with COVID. But we're more excited than anything to share with you kind of our plans for the future. And I don't know if Sharon's next to speak, but she's here to talk about what our commission's going to be doing this next year. Thanks. Is that-
I don't have her registered from your organization for tonight, so you're the spokesperson for that group tonight.
So you read it?
So I'll read it.
Okay. Okay. So we have some upcoming events. March nineteenth, we have St. Patrick's Day cleanup in downtown Suffolk. We all will be meeting at the Nansman Brewing Station and cleaning out litter from downtown Suffolk. On March twenty-sixth, we have a recycling drive and tire amnesty at the Carolina Road facility. This coincides with the National Great American Cleanup. During our recycling events that we hold, we take items that I had just discussed, like household hazardous waste. We have onsite shredding. We have battery takebacks and tire amnesty. It's kind of like a place anybody can just go, and we kind of take everything. Donations for the Lions Club, Goodwill, Boy Scouts, decommission our flags. And we even accept food and non-perishable items for Four Kids Suffolk. Historically, we've had about two hundred to three hundred vehicles come to each of these events and bring items in. In April, on the ninth, we have a river cleanup. That's behind the Hilton downtown. We have kayakers that come, and they collect items from the river, and people on foot that pick up items along the bank and some of the areas around. We have, on the twenty-first, we're kicking off a new thing that we're working on called Smart Start Recycling Challenge. It's for sixth to twelfth graders. They're going to make videos depicting correct ways to recycle. And winners will receive an item from that contest, including a refillable water station for their school, or raised bed gardens for their school, as well as an option of art supplies and some other opportunities. On the twenty-first, which is Earth Day, K S B will host our first-ever volunteer recognition ceremony at the Planters Club, recognizing over seventy volunteers that we've had over the past year. We're also involved in many beautification projects for the city, including-
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle Bolton, fifty-three eleven Sports Club Run, representing self regarding her appreciation to the city of Suffolk.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Bolton from fifty-three eleven Sports Club Run. Good evening, city council, mayor, vice mayor, city manager, madam clerk, and all the support staff working behind the scenes. Thank you for your time and your dedication to making the city of Suffolk a better place. I know it is not easy at times. Tonight was clearly one of them. I'm here to thank you tonight. This is my fourth time here to speak before you, and every time, we've been here to ask you for your help. You've listened attentively, and more importantly, you took action to help us find a solution. And my husband and I appreciate that. The new power line was installed a few weeks ago, and the old visibly damaged power line that was emitting a high E M F and engulfing our homes and bodies was finally cut off. This has been a very difficult journey for more than two years, and it has not been easy on us. At some point, I almost gave up, but in Matthew nineteen, verse twenty-six, it says, "With God, all things are possible." In Proverbs three six, it says, "In all ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy paths." I set my sights on God and his will for our well-being, and the well-being of the other families in our neighborhood that were affected by this unhealthy situation, and he gave me the resolve and strength to keep pushing forward. God directed our path and led us to many good people, including the city council. God moves mountains, and I'm here to say God also moves power lines, and I'm thankful for that. I know that each of you take your role seriously and sometimes have very difficult situations to deal with and uncomfortable decisions to make. I've seen that here. I know you must lose sleep over some of these things, and it's a heavy burden at times. I'm here to thank you for all that you do for the city of Suffolk, because it's not easy on you, and I want you to know that I know that. I am thankful for your dedication and service, and hope that you are able to sort out the lies and deceptions from truth. God shines forth his truth when you listen, and he led me to you. In turn, you provided us with the help that led to moving that power line and the E M F issue further away from our homes. Councilman Ward, I appreciate that you picked up your phone that night, late, and were willing to- to listen, and you took action. The very next day, when we spoke again while you were trying to eat your fried chicken, you told me you would talk to the city manager, and you did. Mr. Moore, thank you for listening, thank you for listening even when I was at my wit's end and feeling frustrated that Dominion Power wasn't working fast enough. Thank you for doing all that you did to help resolve this problem. To all the city council members who listened to our story and acknowledged us at the end of the night, these are long evenings, I appreciate your support and your comments. Mr. Mayor, thank you for addressing this issue and supporting us, we are thankful. I have one more thing to ask of you. Power lines and EMF exposure is a real problem, and it's something that's affecting more people than you know, maybe even you. It exists in many other locations in Suffolk and around the entire country. I've talked to people. It happens to be the power company's best-kept secret, and they want to keep it that way, but you have the ability to implement safer practices and policies to protect the people of Suffolk, and I hope you will work to create legislation to hold Dominion Energy to more rigorous inspection cycles and standards, especially of their buried and hidden, looped power line configurations, which often degrade around the 20-year mark. They will disagree and tell you that they are good for 60 years. That is a lie. The old power line that was at the foot of our foundation was found to be damaged and corroding. I have a picture. Please enforce regular testing and reporting of concentric neutral failure, and demand that faulty power lines are replaced and moved to a safe distance. Away from living spaces and schools and nursing homes, and anywhere where pregnant women and children may be exposed to high levels of EMF over extended periods of time. Hold your planning commission and inspectors accountable for ensuring that buried power lines are located within the proper utility easement and located at a safe distance from living spaces, schools, et cetera. And establish an appropriate distance between the lot line and utility easements. To this day, no one in the City of Suffolk has been able to answer my question. What is the setback requirement for building a home next to a utility easement that contains a buried main power conductor? It's, in the noise ordinance, which I learned about tonight, thank you, it requires a 50-foot boundary. Should the power line be at least the same? Again, thank you for your time, I appreciate all your help, and have a good evening.
The next speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Good evening, long night. I just want to say, on the last two weeks, we did have some kind of meeting, and some kind of meeting was supposed to take place. First of all, I always give credit to where credit is due. Mr. Johnson, with that cute little bang, I always tease him about his hair because he's got a new do. I thank you, because you started the motion going, saying that we need to check on these extra buildings and coming in and getting a little partial of land and putting millions of houses there. Thank you so much. And you also said that you were going to talk about paper streets at the work session. I don't know what you did, because I wasn't here. I don't know what you do in closed doors, because I don't hear. But I just want to say, I did send in the paperwork, letting you know that there are a number of paper streets. And to the city assessor, I don't know where he's gotten to, but I hope he know that even on the paper streets, they have to pay taxes. They can't use the property, because the city says they have to do the entire street to build one home. Maybe you should take a look at your ordinances again, because something is wrong. To have that many paper streets in one community, and nothing is done but pay taxes, pay taxes. And then if you actually build on there, facing a budding street, as you call it, which none of the streets have been improved since, Vito had them back in the 70s, before we came over to Suffolk in 72 or 74, nothing had been done. And then you come and pave a few streets. You milled it, all you did was chopped up the old and put down a new, and the ditches are still flooding, and some of the choppings on the side, because we have no gutters and sidewalks and drain fields, so it's just a big chump of dirt on the side, and even cut up some of the old street just to do the little paving that you did. It's ridiculous. But we pay taxes, and we pay stormwater fees. I know what you're talking about, losing all that money, Mr. Williams. It's really ridiculous. I feel for you. But I'm glad that you had the character to stand. Praise God for that. Keep standing. Lou, I'm proud of you, Lou. Look what you did with that redistricting. You handled it. Be proud of yourself. And all this other stuff that's not getting taken care of, look at. God bless you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
Back again. Hello, everyone. Tonight has been a night. I've heard so much about the City of Suffolk. Heard about the taxes and all, things that's going on. Hear about all the amusement parks and historical areas. However, Pewsville is a historical area that has not been dedicated as such. We are area that is comprised of two localities, Chesapeake and Suffolk, and there have been millions of dollars from different organizations and programs and funding for Pewsville, and we have not received that. Our children still stand on the corner of the streets to catch bus with no sidewalks, cars fly through the neighborhood. We still dealing with drainage and flooding that we have been talking about forever, and it's also outrageous that Chucka Tuck and Oakland, they deal with sewage in their homes from all the developments that's going on. And we have talked about elderly people in the neighborhood that have been there for years, how it seems as if the major problems are in their, affecting their homes. And you seem like everything is on the deaf ear. You give promises, but nothing is actually coming forward. However, all around Pewsville, we have a nice little sidewalk, or a trail path to walk at, and you know, we heard people talk about exercising and trails and sightseeing. Well, how about doing some history in Pewsville? Because there's a lot that have came on from the African-Americans that started Pewsville that is historical, that our children and the schools should be able to hear and even do a field trip through. However, it's kind of hard to do that when, on all those paper streets that the city's supposed to bring up to par, have not refused to, but target military residents to move in and build into Pewsville. However, it was also stated that, you know, when it comes to these new developments and houses and all, it's amazing how only you're targeting military, but nobody in Pewsville can really actually purchase their own property, or property that does come up for sale in Pewsville, and it's not even listed on the market. And if someone needs to check the tax assessments that's going on, because who's paying for it? The elderly, and those homes have not been changed, have not been upgraded, and there's programs that could upgrade and help the elderly. It's just recently, at the beginning of the year, you wanted to take away, and you did take away a person's home, a single mother home, because of the city wants to do development and take the areas for different developments that come into our community, but not take care of the residents. But then the week later, or the two weeks later, another resident in a historical area, her home was old and had some problems, and you all overturned that that you made to save her home, and both homes needed. You know, you need to check the fairness of people. When you come out to our community and stuff, you need to actually see what's going on. You own, Suffolk also goes all the way out to Belleville, that little path back there, ditches have not been touched, overflowing with trash and debris, and no one lived back there. Who's cleaning that? We doing beautification to the city. What about Pewsville? And I will continue to speak on Pewsville and other areas as well. However, it is time that you actually do something in Pewsville and not around Pewsville. You have that option, and we do vote, we pay taxes, and with these homes that you're allowing the builders to build and developers to build on paper streets, but yet you don't require them to build and turn the streets into a complete street, it's unfair, it's not right, and you need to take a look into it. And this is again, it's not a new problem, it's an old problem. So again, we're not the only ones watching. God watch you, and He sees.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
Be blessed.
The final speaker this evening is Reverend Wallace Johnson, 2086, Nansman Parkway, representing self regarding the compensation plan.
Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, and to our city clerk. I want to say, I sit here today, I've learned some stuff in this place today. It'll, this is not a job for the faint of heart, I can tell you that. But I do want to say, I want to thank you, Councilman Ward, for the third map, map seat that you all voted on, and it came to pass, and I thank you for that. I want to say to Councilman Williams, thank you for being the bigger and better man tonight. We learned something from that as well. Again, I want to say to our mayor, I've talked with some citizens, and they're waiting to hear from you. We got so much crime, so much shooting, things that are going on, they're looking for you to make a statement. Just say something to the community, so that the community know that you all do care, and I believe you care. And I know you're busy, but sometimes we got to take a moment just to let the public know that we, you are all concerned about what's going on in our very city. The other thing is, is that again, I know the last time I was here, and I was talking about the corner down on Nansman Parkway and Portsmouth Boulevard, I'm not talking about the work that they're doing there. What I'm talking about is right there at the 7-Eleven store. Trying to get in and out of that place is disastrous. Around any, if you all would just come down there and look, anytime after 3 o'clock in the afternoon, it is so much traffic that the traffic backs up from the corner all the way back to the school. Why? Because the parents are picking their kids up. You only have one way in there and one way out of there. So what it does, people used to be able to make a left coming off of Portsmouth Boulevard into that gas station. They can't do that anymore. They used to be able to make a left going out of there onto Nansman Parkway. They can't do that anymore. But let me tell you what they've done. The dividers that the city put up down there, they have taken up some of those dividers, and now they are meeting traffic coming out of there. So the only way to get out of that place is to go up and make a right onto Portsmouth Boulevard, then go up, make a U-turn, and come back around. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense. I'm asking you all to do something about that area before somebody gets seriously hurt and even killed, because an accident, a tragic accident is just waiting to happen. You talking about meeting traffic head-on when they come out of there, that's exactly what they're doing. So I'm asked and thanking council tonight for the decision that you all made on voting on map seat. Thank you again, Councilman Ward.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
We now move to new business. Madam Clerk, is there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Following individuals have been nominated to the respective boards and commissions. The Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Whaleyville Borough, effective March 1, 2022, Andre Anthony Harper, the Planning Council, Shamika Council, and the Tidewater Emergency Medical Services Council Board of Directors, Acting Battalion Chief, Keith Johnson.
Counsel, a motion be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
So moved on that, Mayor.
For approval. Councilman Williams?
Second.
We have a second, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Is there, are there any other new business items that require the action of the city council for consideration? Hearing none at this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Tim Kelly has any announcements? And once again, being a gamble man, I think he does.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We start with some good news tonight for the local business scene. And this is from, there we got it caught up, now we can give you the good news. Okay. Nothing Bunt Cakes recently held their grand opening ribbon cutting at their location at 5840 Harborview Boulevard. They offer premium, high-quality bunt cakes in a variety of sizes and classic flavors. Nothing Bunt Cakes also offers handcrafted cake decorations themed around holidays and celebrations throughout the year. Apothecary 1885, a new beauty salon and spa is opened at 1885 Governor's Point Drive. The shop features a full-service hair salon, offering cuts, color, and blowouts. They plan to expand their spa services into massage and other therapeutic treatments in the future. And Pink Box Suites has been open at the Harborview Marketplace, 5860 Harborview Boulevard, Suite B2, for two years. They recently celebrated with an official grand opening and ribbon cutting on Monday, February 14, the exact day of their two-year anniversary. Customers at Pink Box Suites can choose from a variety of pastries and sweet desserts, such as cinnamon rolls, cookies, and banana pudding, with the house specialty being cupcakes. The community garden at the East Suffolk Recreation Center provides a place to garden, and Suffolk Parks and Recreation is offering an opportunity to adopt a bed for the 2022 growing season. The intent of the community garden is to establish a space that encourages producing nutritious food, while creating opportunities for healthful outdoor exercise, recreation, horticulture, therapy. The beds are free for adoption, and due to the limited number, are assigned by first available. Adoptees can grow fruits, vegetables, and flowers, as long as they agree to maintain the bed throughout the year. Adoption is open to any individual, group, or organization that resides in Suffolk. Black History Month continues at the Suffolk Public Library. The Our Story Through Dance event will be held virtually on Saturday, February 26 at 10:00 a.m. for all ages, and on Monday, February 28 at 6:00 p.m., attendees will have a chance to discuss current events with Delegate Clinton Jenkins, Dominic Epps, Tony Jones, and Sylvia Bond. All Black History Month events are free and open to the public. It will be a celebration of black joy, expression, achievements, and a timely exploration of the current events that are shaping our world. Suffolk Fire Marshal's Office would like to remind citizens that the Virginia Department of Forestry, 4:00 p.m. burn law went into effect on February 15. It'll last through April 30. Now, this is an effective tool in the prevention of forest fires, as debris burning continues to be the leading cause of forest fires in Virginia. The law prohibits open air burning before 4:00 p.m. if the fire is within 300 feet of the woods or dry grass, which could carry fire into the February the 14th, the exact day of their two-year anniversary. Customers at Pink Box Suites can choose from a variety of pastries and sweet desserts such as cinnamon rolls, cookies, and banana pudding, with the house specialty being cupcakes. The community garden at the East Suffolk Recreation Center provides a place to garden, and Suffolk Parks and Recreation is offering an opportunity to adopt a bed for the 2022 growing season. The intent of the community garden is to establish a space that encourages producing nutritious food while creating opportunities for healthful outdoor exercise, recreation, horticulture, therapy. The beds are free for adoption and, due to the limited number, are assigned by first available. Adoptees can grow fruits, vegetables, and flowers as long as they agree to maintain the bed throughout the year. Adoption is open to any individual, group, or organization that resides in Suffolk. Black History Month continues at the Suffolk Public Library. The Our Story Through Dance event will be held virtually on Saturday, February 26th at 10:00 a.m. for all ages. And on Monday, February 28th at 6:00 p.m., attendees will have a chance to discuss current events with Delegate Clinton Jenkins, Dominic Epps, Tony Jones, and Sylvia Bond. All Black History Month events are free and open to the public. It will be a celebration of black joy, expression, achievements, and a timely exploration of the current events that are shaping our world. Suffolk Fire Marshal's Office would like to remind citizens of the Virginia Department of Forestry, 4:00 p.m. burn law went into effect on February 15th. It'll last through April 30th. Now, this is an effective tool in the prevention of forest fires, as debris burning continues to be the leading cause of forest fires in Virginia. The law prohibits open-air burning before 4:00 p.m. if the fire is within 300 feet of the woods or dry grass, which could carry fire into the woods. Winds usually calm down, and the relative humidity levels are on the increase after 4:00 p.m., both of which reduce the potential for debris fire or any other open-air fire to escape your control. One note, this law does not apply to charcoal or gas-fired barbecue grills. Users are still encouraged to take proper care and precaution by clearing all flammable material from around the grill and stay with it until it's completely extinguished or turned off. In observance of George Washington, the George Washington Day holiday, Suffolk City offices are closed on Monday, February 21st. Normal operations resume the next day, Tuesday, February 22nd. Suffolk Public's Work Department will pick up trash as scheduled for the period of February 22nd through the 25th. TFC Recycling also running as normal for the February 22nd through the 25th period. So again, collection as normal for the week of the holiday. Suffolk Transit will also be operating on a normal schedule, though on the holiday, which is again Monday, February 21st. The Virginia Department of Health will hold a COVID-19 testing event at the East Suffolk Recreation Center on Friday, February 25th. That'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The event will offer PCR testing only and will be conducted by a VDH testing vendor. And again, residents seeking a COVID-19 vaccine are encouraged to visit vaccinatevirginia.gov or contact the State Call Center to find a convenient location near them. The Virginia Department of Health also has information online, again, for those looking for COVID testing locations. So again, that URL at the bottom of your screen there. And we leave you with the ways we reach out to our residents and business owners, the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, 5144000, if you want to get connected with city services. We have staff that are answering the phone to help address any questions you may have as well. With that, say good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Sir.
We'll now move on to announcements and comments from City Council. We're going to start with Councilman Williams this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This has been a, a long night. But let me start off by saying, or better than that, let me start off by apologizing because I was out of character, and that's not the norm. I'd like to apologize to Mr. Bennett for calling him a coward. I was just out of character. That's, that's not me. So I'm apologizing in public, so everybody can hear it. With that said, I want to thank the citizens for coming out tonight and voicing their opinions and concerns regarding the redistricting. I'd like to thank Mr. Ward, Councilman Ward, for putting together a great, fair, equitable map, map C. Great job. I know you worked hard. Also, I want to thank the city employees for coming out, showing their support as it related to the compensation plan. Everybody didn't get exactly what they wanted. However, everybody got something, which is important. Mr. City Manager, if you could have staff take a look at City Ordinance Article 4, Remover of Weeds: Excessive Growth of Vegetation, Trash, and Debris, Section 34-108, the removal required 15-day period. Most notices that have been going out with Neighborhood Development Services, it's been saying 10 days, but the ordinance says 15 days. So we might want to take a look at that, because 15 days is a long time, expected during growing season, to have the homeowners and stuff, our property owners, to comply. I mean, you, you may have three feet of grass there, depending on the, the season. So if you would take a look at that, please have staff take a look at that. Also, if you would please give me an update on the progress of the decorative lighting around the poles again, on East Wycheston Street, starting at the railroad tracks to County Street and Liberty Street light. My word for the month, and this is the second time you guys have heard it, is fairness, impartial, and just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. And with that, I'd like to say goodnight.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Mr. Manager, the gentleman that spoke about the robbery and, I'm pleased to have someone look into that, that just is very disturbing that there was no response or anything back on that. That's just, just, I just don't understand. So please have someone respond, and let us all know back. I think it disturbed everyone here, and I think we all would like to know about it. Second, we've had a, we had an interesting night tonight, and I want to say that we got a few things done and accomplished, and I appreciate the effort of everyone who did that. And I did, Mayor, I spent some time with the industrial, the Economic Development Authority the past week, and they're doing a great job for the city. And I wanted to let you know that they are a fine group, doing a great job. And with that, I say goodnight.
I'm gonna be a minute, and y'all have to forgive me that I'm gonna be a minute. Watch everybody else talk, but I'm gonna be a minute tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank that we did mention that, that we went to VML with a couple of the council people. I know one might have been the first one, the councilwoman, Barlow, hope she enjoyed it. Councilman, Mr. Williams, your first one, I hope you enjoyed it. And also, Councilman Vice Mayor Bennett was there. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I missed nobody. And we had, we had the pleasure of seeing, I didn't get there at a certain time, but the pleasure of seeing one of our delegates, Emily Bruhl. And she was ahead of the meeting. She did, she as well talked about it. They were saying how she was in a couple of meetings, and she chaired a few. And we had the other pleasure of going to talk to Tommy Norman. Went to his office. So happened, he was there, and he talked about a couple of things that interested me, and that was African-American graveyards. I'm much more interested in that, always have been. So he talked about that and answered some of the questions. And I always enjoy myself to see other elected officials, some of the problems they have, we have, so we can talk about it. Also, I think we tend Mr. Mirtill home-going. It was well-attended. The speakers were well, well-read. They talked well about former Mayor, Councilman Curtis Mirtill. It was a great, it was a great event to be at, and well-respected, and he deserved it. I want to thank Ms. Bottom, Bottom, Bolton, because very few times residents come up and thank us for what we do. And it might seem easy, because you just see us on Wednesday, on a Wednesday, two Wednesdays, but it's hard work, very hard work. And what I try to do myself is do exactly what I did with you. I try to get the trust and let you know, I'm not going to sit there and tell you I know about light bulbs and all this type of stuff, and they, no. I called the city manager, and the city manager do, have been doing the job of getting contact with the residents. And that's what normally I, how I work. Then I call the resident back and make sure that, that he could call you, and the city manager make sure that he'll call me back. Like I said, I'm gonna take my time tonight, because I deserve the night 10 years. So anyway, thank you so much. And I want to thank you because how you respond to that, and you could have done a lot of things. You could have went to the news, and you could have did so much, and you said you didn't want to do that. That was the first thing you said. And I appreciate that, suffered the need there, so thank you again on that. The Lord led you right on what you wanted to do, and it, and it worked out well. Not only that, you, you came to get to know some of the council people, part personal now, so that's pretty good. And I thank you again that you came up and thanked the council for doing the work. Sometimes it take a little longer than what you want, but I think we did. We are good council, and certain things we jump on. And I thank the council for, when you came on that last time, we had talked for a while, and they seen what you had been going through, and they respond, with the mayor and the rest of the council. So I thank you for that. I really do appreciate that. You've been very professional, you know, you understood, and you always present yourself in a good manner. You read all, and we had to listen to what you said. Thank you again. I want to just tell my friends, I think I'll call them friends, Carl and Mike, and Ms. Brandy. You're right, sometimes, y'all are talking about Pewsville. Unfortunately, Pewsville have been overlooked, we're not gonna say intentionally, but have been overlooked, and some things should have been done, but with your persistence by coming up here, and you have a councilman that, you know I feel about Pewsville, we're gonna get it done, and the city gonna help us get it done. We understand the flooding. We're gonna try to get that done. Councilman Barlow, she have a situation in Chucka Tuck, and I'm gonna try to help her get hers done. We not just gonna let these villages just go and not be looked after. That's, that's not what's gonna happen here. And I can, I can guarantee you that. And with that money y'all supposed to be getting, it's gonna be spent on Pewsville and some of the things that y'all, Mike can't get everything, but we can get most of what we can. And I think the council is, is behind that 100%. I'd like to thank all the people that spoke about redistricting, some of the pastors I've seen was in the audience, thank some of the pastors, the ministers, and also some of the city leaders. And I also thank the council. I gotta go back, that sometimes you have to get out your box to get the attention of people, let them know that you're really serious and you have feelings for what you're talking about. Yes, they probably didn't agree how I spoke to the person who drew the map, but I knew the map. I knew what was going on. And I thank all the accolades, but I want to thank some of the people. First of all, I want to thank, me and William had a good talk, and me and William go way back. Me and William go back 10 years ago, when he was working with the city. So we had our little fun in the office talking, and he knew he was in for a little fight, and he didn't say nothing, but he helped me much as he could. I want to thank a couple of my councilmen. I had to get five votes, and it wasn't, wasn't easy. What did I know about drawing maps? They didn't figure that. They always say, you know, look, they don't know what, what I do know, but anyway, they didn't figure that would happen. And that night, when I said to the, forgot his last name, but anyway, I said to him, and he said that he can't draw a map without the incumbent in the borough. Me and, me and Mr. Williams went to Richmond, and we still didn't talk about what we should have been talking about now that I know after I done it. So what happened was, I came in that night, and one of the councilmen's asked, how you doing? And he also say, are you all right? That meant a lot. That meant a lot. That meant a lot. If you know how I've been on this council for 10 years, that meant a lot. I didn't want to get rid of Harborview. Harborview community is a special community. And one thing I want to say about them, and if you all forget, the Harborview community, when you campaigning, they're one of the most respected communities I've seen. And one thing about, most of them would say, they be in a garage, you'll go there on a Saturday or whatever, and they don't ask you what party you in, or what you, they all said, thank you for serving. That's why I'm on the board. After a while, they knew who I were, and they all said, keep on going, Councilman Ward, regardless. I didn't, they didn't, we, we was fine. They allowed me to put it in the mailbox with no complaints. Thank you. It been a pleasure serving you. And Councilman Foster do a great job. I ain't know, I'm not that far. I got some parts of Harborview. But I wanted to say this here. I want to say this first. Paper streets, we gonna check that out. Gonna check out Y Street. I got my, this down here, Mr. Lewis, me and you gonna have a little chat. Me and you gonna go do some walking in Pewsville. So you gonna educate me a little more what's going on and what we can't do. I'm better looking at it still, you telling me on the board. Let's go in there, and we gonna go with Ms. White, Ms. Brandy, and Mr. White. We will do that. So we gonna get this, because you gonna have to keep coming up saying about drainage. That's gonna be taken care of. Took me 10 years for the map. 10 years ago, 11 years ago, y'all know the story. I ran because of Pewsville. And while I ran, I wasn't satisfied of what, what had happened. They spit them up. So I decided to run. I was president of ACP, but Paul C. Gillis was one of the people that worked with the NWC for years, and I'll say it openly. He was my mentor, and I respect how he dealt with civil rights. Charles Christian was the president, and he had stepped down, and I became president, and he go redistricting, didn't know too much about it at all. I gotta give praises to this young man. His name is Johnny Edwards III. He came on board, and we been together ever since doing different things. God is good, because I'm gonna go back what I was thinking about. I know y'all, I mean, I'm gonna say it anyway, you know me. When I ran, I was not supposed to win. Wasn't supposed to win. Okay. The next time I ran, I wasn't supposed to win. The third time I ran, I would say mentally was the hardest one on me. I wasn't supposed to win. And you know, I believe in God. And I thought today, I said, you know what? I was the right person in order to win and put Pewsville back together like they supposed to be back together. Because I thought about that. If I wasn't the one, Pewsville still be split up. So I'm giving myself that credit. Y'all have to do it, I'm giving myself that. And I'm thanking the Lord for that, because I'm at ease. I want to tell all of y'all, when you do the Lord's work, and you think that's what he wants you to do, I ain't mad with nobody no more. Whatever you done before, y'all just done it. I have accomplished something. 10 years it took me to do this. I, I'm not mad with nobody, because I feel good I did something for a community that deserves much more what they have, but now they're together. I thank the council for voting. I thank Mr. Williams for seconding it. I thank Butler Barlow for saying yes. I thank you, Tim, for saying yes. I thank you, man. I really do. Mike, I thank you for saying yes. Those were my five votes. I wasn't supposed to get five votes. Y'all had enough faith in me to even to get the map done. Without y'all guys, I couldn't do it. And Tim, what's the thing about you? You said, will it be legal? And I said, I kept that in my mind. And I said, I kept that in my mind head all the time. We gonna make it legal. Mr. Johnny Edwards, the genius, put it together. And I'm gonna say what happened. And also thank all y'all for allowing me to, to meet with all y'all. We met with everybody and trying to find out what y'all want, what, what y'all think. And that's where we should have done it from the beginning. I know you might be tired, but I don't talk this long, so now I listen to y'all guys, you're gonna listen to me tonight. I had to wait 10 years for this. If I don't do nothing else on council, I did what I supposed to have done. I don't do nothing else. And tonight, when I voted and I hesitated, this was the hardest vote I ever had. When I do things, mostly it's not about me. And I had to think and I had to think, but my concern was not, my concern were the people who that should be rewarded and received. That's all my concern were. And I asked, Lord, please let me say what you want me to say. Yes, I'm taking y'all to church tonight, today, but I just want y'all to know, I ain't mad with nobody and done my job. I don't do nothing else on council. Took me 10 years. In the last three months, I've been catching it because it wore me out. It really, I've been through some things that y'all don't know. But tonight, I applaud y'all guys for voting for redistricting. I really do, I, I, I really do applaud y'all. And I thank the people that all y'all voted. And I gotta mention that, I forgot, somebody did go somewhere, a new place, nothing but cakes up in Harborview. It's a good place, a young lady, it's, it's, it's a, it's a second store and she's very willing to help the community. I just wanna say again, I wanna thank Mr. Johnny Edwards. I wanna thank Ed Rutter. I wanna thank these people because they made sure that we had a professional map and a map that represents Suffolk. Thank y'all again. It been a long 10 years. It been a tough three months. But it was all worth it to see the city of Suffolk get what they deserve. You say a lot of things about Councilor Ward, but the one thing about it, when I start, I finish and it ain't about me, it's about the people. Thank God.[796.13] And I say, "God bless."
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. My first thought is, I guess it's something about February, but it's been a long night. I think we all gained some things and we all lost some things, but feel like we did good work tonight. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for your support. I appreciate it. And my partner in crime is here tonight, and he appreciates it too. So we appreciate the opportunity on the farm lease. I want to take congratulations to Apothecary 1885. I was privileged to be there for the ribbon cutting. Lori Elliott, the owner, had very wonderful things to say about the city of Suffolk and how, how simple and helpful and the process of her opening her business in Suffolk was. And she gave many compliments to staff for all their assistance. And I just want to point out that it was a woman-owned business featuring women-produced products, and it was an all-woman ribbon cutting, so just have to say that. I like that. But congratulations to them and best of luck. And like I said, it was fun to be there. I wish the Keep Suffolk Beautiful folks were still here. I had a comment from a friend and a constituent that wants to know why there's no recycling in city buildings. And I was gonna charge Keep Suffolk Beautiful with asking the city if we can start having recycling in our public buildings. And they've left, but hopefully they'll see that on the record. And I know that's off the wall, but again, I had hoped they would stay here, because I do think it's something that we should commit to as a city. And I don't know if we did it and we went away from it, or if we never did it, but I'd like to see us go back to it if possible. And that's enough for one night. Thank you again to everyone, and good night.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Well, and I'ma piggyback on that for just a minute about Keep Suffolk Beautiful Commission. The two young ladies that were here tonight gave us a really great presentation. I'm sorry we had to cut them off. They are a true asset to this city, and I don't think we recognize what they do enough. I deal with them quite a bit, and they just truly love what they do, and it's such a great thing for our city. So with that being said, I'd like to ask the city manager to make sure at some point we do a special presentation and invite them back. And not that we were rude to them tonight, but I felt like we were being a little bit rude. They are really an asset to our city, what they do. I mean, they do more than we can imagine. All you have to do is attend some of the recycling drives and that kind of thing. And then maybe we can ask them about that, and they'll do a favor for us. But I was so impressed with them. One other thing I just throw out to the people out there, we had a little faux pas at Holly Lawn Cemetery not too long ago, and I know the city is addressing it at this point, but one lady came to me that had lost her son, and it was just tear dropping. So we need to recognize as a city that everything we do has, is good, is for a purpose. And when we screw up a little bit, we need to make sure people understand that we really understand what their heartbreak's about. That one kind of hit me hard this week. The power line lady that came in too, I would like to look into that sixty-foot thing, Al. If she couldn't find anything on the books, maybe we need to investigate that a little bit and know what we require. Or maybe it was just an oversight. But I think that's something that we probably ought to have on record, where Dominion Power has to put it in place. And what we did for her was, again, really, really nice. I'm so appreciative. Last thing I'm gonna end with, because I'm not rehashing anything tonight. I'm grateful for every employee. I'm thrilled that we're gonna be able to give them a significant raise. I'm all about the city moving forward in positive direction and making sure that we can continue to do it forever. So with that being said, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. If you would, Mr. Manager, I think it's time for us to take a look at doing an aggressive pothole campaign out here. It's beginning with this weather. We've had some of these roadways coming apart. One in particular, the intersection of Sleepy Hole Road and Bennet's Pasture Road. But there are several areas, as I catch them, I'll write them down and try to get them over to, to the call line or whatever to get them noted. The redistricting plan went well. I'm pleased that it went well, and everybody on this dais voted in favor of it. So that's a sign of a good thing there for our city. The comp plan is not just a comp plan, it's a step plan that's coming forward. And I want to thank each and every one of y'all for stepping up, and we went back and forth, but we truly have done something to help our employees, no matter where they work or what they do. So we can be thankful for that, and I'm sure it's gonna work out, and we'll see where it goes. The Keep Suffolk Beautiful group, I agree with you, Tim, they were just great people. I mean, to save $62,000 and just doing some of the things they did was, that's not, that's pretty decent. That's pretty interesting. And just think of the trash and things they pick up, that if they didn't do it, what we'd look like. So, you know, we ought to be thankful for that. Thank you for all the speakers, probably not all here tonight, but those that were here, I thank you very much for being here. It's always a pleasure to hear your comments. I wish sometimes we could fix everybody's problems, but it doesn't always work out that easily, but we will continue to work. I want to thank the folks that came out about the power line thing. I'm so grateful that y'all can go back to your home and get back to normal. I think you probably, probably got a new section now of the house that you can go in that you haven't been able to go in. So I want to thank the city manager, the mayor, and everybody for getting involved with this, and the council for putting the support behind them to push this thing up and get it taken care of. I attended Mr. Military's service. It was a great service, a great tribute to a man that spent a lot of years here dedicating his time from when he came out of the military to serving the city in many capacities, whether it be on boards and commissions, or the time he spent here in city council, forty years is kind of like, I don't know, that's just kind of a time I couldn't wrap my head around. But he was a great person to work with, and he was a slick dog sometimes. You didn't know where he was coming from, but he's a good man. Donnie Goldberg, Mr. Manager already alluded to the incident on the 26th of January that happened in Deerfield. That's very disturbing. The only thing I can say about the young man that stood up here tonight is he had details. He had names of people that were contacted that never returned the calls. He had those names, didn't read it from a script, he had it from the top of his head. That is just difficult for me to understand. So it thoroughly needs to be investigated to find out where it went, and I would like a full, detailed report back. That is my borough, and I am interested in what happened at that location, and what we didn't do, what we should have done, or what we could have done. Whatever the facts are, I'd like to have it, all of it. I want to thank you and your staff for taking it tonight and going back and forth. I know it was tough to sit there and take it, particularly when you didn't probably agree with some of the things that were being said, or some of the things that happened tonight. But we've had a pretty intense night here tonight. Make no mistake, tonight was a difficult night. We don't have many of these, and when we do, they're pretty good knockouts, you know? So I want to thank you for standing tall tonight, along with your staff. It doesn't go unnoticed, the credibility and the work they do. Doesn't always mean we agree with them, or they agree with us. It's that we make the decisions, and that's the way it works when it's put in front of us. So again, I want to thank everybody on the dais tonight for a very good evening. I look forward to seeing you in March. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start out by saying that congratulations to Mrs. Artis, the new medical health, mental health director that's in the police department. I think that's a great tool that I've been hearing a lot of police departments have been looking forward to having someone to work with in their department. So I want to congratulate whoever was responsible for getting that person on board. I think that's a great tool that will help the officers as well, and the citizens that they serve, if we serve, as to go out and need some help with mental health. I think that's a great position that has been filled. And Mrs. Artis, she had been working in that field for some time, and I don't know her personally, but it sounded like she's gonna be of great access to the police department. So I just want to congratulate the chief and all that's involved with having her come on board. Also, on the 14th, Valentine Day, the Paint Box Sweets there for the ribbon cutting. And if you haven't been by there, it's right there by the movie theater in Harborview. They have a great small place there. And the Freeman family, it's decorated all pink, it's beautiful in there. And, I mean, they were busy. They could hardly wait to get the ribbon cutting, people standing in line to pick up some sweets. So if you're in that area, please stop by and show them their support for having them in our great city. Also, I'd like to thank Dominion Power for the $28,000 that they gave to Oaklawn Cemetery. They made that presentation last week, and that was something that George Richardson had really worked hard for, trying to maintain in that cemetery. And some of his family members were still involved with that, so I know he's looking down with a smile on his face, because that was one of his things that he really was, worked very hard to try and make that cemetery something that was very presentable with all the veterans and all that's buried out there. He definitely wanted to make sure that they was taken care of. Also, I'd like to thank all the employees that came out tonight, and those that were not here to listen and be a part of listening to what was taking place about the comp study. And I know that sometime we ask for something, we don't get everything we want, but I think we was trying to do something to show our employees that they care, because I think that they are keeping our city safe, our city clean, and they are keeping the city being operated in this pandemic that we've been going through. And I think everyone has done an outstanding job, and I just want to congratulate them. And also, happy to know that we were able to pass this ordinance tonight, so that they will be able to look forward to this pace study being implemented. And hopefully that will continue to make people know that we do care about our employees, and we want them to be treated fairly, and they will be taken care of. Also, Mr. Manager on Bob White Lane, been getting quite a few emails and all about the streets up there where the new development is going in. And that street has been torn up now for just about a year, and they are having a lot of car damage and whatnot because of it. So we will get with Mr. Vico, Veco, I think it is, whoever's doing that development, make sure they get in there and try to get some asphalt in there to try and take care of that area there, in that subdivision. Councilman Meara Tia was a great role model for a lot of us, and I think that he will be missed. And I'll miss him calling and saying, "Hey, young man, I want to run something by you." And usually when he calls and says he want to run something by you, he's trying to get you to agree with whatever he want to run by you. Not just call you and say he want to run something by you, but he want your support with whatever he want to run by you. So he was a great man, and he will be missed. And I think it's a great thing that we are able to try to move forward with naming the Willowville Rec Center in his honor, because he was the one that really fought hard to make sure that they had some type of recreation down in the Willowville area. So I think it's a great honor to have his name on that building and his recognition. I want to say that I had made a note here. God love you, and I do too, and a thing that you can do about it. So I love you. God bless you.
All righty. Well, I'll go ahead and wrap it up here, and I will. Been a lot said during the comments, and been a lot said during our meeting tonight. So I will be as brief as possible. Obviously, we had a rather robust work session. I think robust is the word. And we addressed a compensation plan, and I want to thank the city manager again, and his staff, Jessica Carey, Brent, for everything that they did, the attitude they did it with, the open-mindedness that they did it with, the efficiency that they did it with, and addressed every issue that was brought up by this council. I'm especially excited about the equity adjustments for our lower-paid employees. That was brought up, and it was immediately addressed. I'm probably more excited about that than I am anything, because these folks will see, do they get paid a lot of money? No. But they'll see a pretty good jump in their pay from where they are, which is well deserved. I think we addressed everything we talked about. We implemented a step plan. We will be the first city in Hampton Roads to implement a step plan for public safety in all our employees. Little Suffolk gonna be number one. So everybody just picked up the phone tomorrow morning and said, "We gotta get busy on something, because Suffolk just did this." It's kind of how the process works. And then it'll all come around, and then it'll be our time to do something. We addressed the market value in our jobs. They drilled into every single job. I don't think they left a stone unturned. So once again, thank you very much for all your hard work. I probably don't fully appreciate it, but I can only imagine what went into it. I think all our employees are going to be excited when they see the results. Sincerely hope it is sustainable. I don't want, well, I may not be around, but somebody wake up one day and say, "Guess what? We're gonna put a freeze on it." It sounds real easy, but folks usually aren't that happy when they don't get what they expect. I mean, that's been my experience in my short time on this earth, but hopefully we won't get there. We passed the CIP today. That's pretty, that's pretty big news. Passed the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. We got that done. Redistricting, my hats off to everyone on council. Councilman Ward, Johnny Edwards, you know, they put that together. The third plan kind of killed two birds with one stone, got us the third plan. I don't, you know, Mr. Lofton did a good job, but nobody knows our city like we know our city. You know, it's hard for somebody in Richmond to look at a map and lines and try to figure out what's going on in Suffolk. And having the experience to know what the issues were, you know, helped immensely. And I appreciated everybody's support here. Went down fine. I think everybody was happy with the result, and I can tell you, there is a, I wouldn't say a huge difference, bigger than a huge difference, as to how it was handled this time versus last time. This time, you know, from start to finish, it was transparent, it was out there, everybody had a voice. Everyone on here had a, everyone on the dais had a voice, all our citizens had a voice, and it was done. Nobody could have done it any better than what we did, regardless of whose map we came up with. That's not the issue. The process was 100%. And I appreciate everybody's efforts there. We got a report from our assessor, Mr. Billy Butt, in regards to assessments for this year. I mean, once again, not only there could have been any, you know, better, we're very, very fortunate with the growth that we've had. As I asked him during the time, I am interested in the reassessment process and how much of it was new construction versus existing reassessments, so I can get an idea of what that additional tax burden, you know, may be on our citizens, because, you know, I hope that when we put a budget together, we possibly could offer some relief there. I want to thank the vice mayor for coming up with the idea, his proposal to honor Councilman Military by renaming Willowville Rec Center. I wish I had come up with it, but I can't take credit for that one. That one's yours. Great idea, and I'm sure that's gonna come to fruition. What else I got? Just about it. Like I said, we did a lot tonight. In spite of ourselves, we did a lot. Compensation plan, that's big stuff. Redistricting, that's big stuff. CIP, that's big stuff. And we got some good reports, so my hat's off to everybody. We'd like to make one announcement. Ms. Marie Hill, who had 100th birthday last year, at this time is having 101st birthday. 100, now we're 101. And she's kind of the matriarch of Hobson. I mean, she really is. She is the matriarch of Hobson. They're gonna have a parade for her Saturday. Unfortunately, I will not be here, because I'll be out of town, but there is a parade in Hobson, starts at Hudson Circle, goes to Macedonia and Crettonden Road. So happy birthday, Mama Hill. If I'm out there in person, I will be there in spirit. And with that, my quote of the night is from Oscar Wilde, short and sweet, and it is, "Be yourself. Everybody else is already taken." So with that being said, I am going to ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett. And we need a second, a second from Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.